Thank you councillors, Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today, amen? We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance, we pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, I declare the meeting of the 22nd of the second twenty-two open, my paladrum. Are there any apologies? Councillor Landers?
Mr Chair, I advise that Councillor Marks and Councillor Murphy will be absent today and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Hutton that Councillors Murphy and Marks be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,671st meeting held on Tuesday 15th of February 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Second it.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,671st meeting of council held on the 15th of February 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? So, to the...
I don't have a card. I'm just going to yell.
The card should be there, councillor.
I can't see what's on my card.
Where is it? Isn't the card not there? Okay, councillor Atwood.
I'm good, I'm good. Okay, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor early works on one of the Shirena Council signature projects, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge is now underway. Can you please update the chamber on what has been achieved to date on this project, including what Brisbane residents can expect to see on this city shaping project over the next several weeks?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Atwood for the question. Well, today was a really exciting day for the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge and in fact for our team who championed this project and now today we're seeing the very first pile casings being put on the barge, ready to be installed in the middle of the river. Now, pile casings might not be things that get you excited on an average day, but today is a different day because what we're seeing is the very first work being done in the river whereby the large piles and the cases that they will sit in go into the middle of the river. And these piles will support the 95 metre main mast of the bridge. And so, we're getting cracking on construction. There's multiple barges in the river right now and this project has officially started construction. There's been obviously until now, a lot of site preparation works on both sides of the river and a lot of gearing up, but now the construction has begun. And so, this is a really exciting project that will not only help people move easier across the river and around the city of Brisbane, but also facilitate an important Olympic outcome as well. It will mean that people will be able to walk from the centre of the city, the CBD, across to the Gaba precinct in a matter of minutes. They'll be across the bridge and then into that Gaba precinct on foot easily and safely. And this is over and above the other benefits of the bridge as well, ensuring that there are more options to cycle, to walk, to scooter across the river at this location. Now, this is a project that has been very important to this administration, this council, to this team because it's one of the first things that I announced as the new Lord Mayor that we would get on with. And today, construction has started and we've done everything possible to fast track this project. We're fast tracking it and we're making sure that it will be done by 2023. And so, that gives a great opportunity for new movement systems around our city, but it also, as we always try to do, creates local jobs. And we will see more than 300 local jobs being created on this project. And what's more important as well is that around 90% of all of the materials that will be needed to build the bridge are coming from this local area here in South East Queensland. There will also be 50 apprenticeships created as part of this project as well. And so, we're really excited about so many things about this bridge, but there's one more thing that I'm really excited about as well. And that we have been seeking funding commitments for this bridge from other levels of government. And we are very close to getting an agreement on that funding. So, I'm very excited and obviously there'll be more to announce in the coming weeks and months on that, but we're getting on with it, we're building it, it's under construction and now there's an opportunity for other levels of government to come on board as well. So, I am so excited about this project. It will really help Brisbane to become a more livable and sustainable city. It will facilitate a great outcome in the Olympic Games and also for tourism. And also, I love the fact that it'll be one of the few bridges in the world to have a restaurant or boutique bar in the bridge itself. It'll become a tourist attraction in itself. And so, that is a very exciting opportunity and one that I know the people of Brisbane will appreciate, but also visitors to our city, I know, will flock towards this bridge, not only to get across to the fantastic Kangaroo Point precinct, but also to have a bite to eat and maybe a drink on the bridge itself, adding and experiencing the wonderful Brisbane and Queensland lifestyle. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, between November last year and January this year, residents made almost 4,000 complaints to council about overgrown parks and grass. That's almost 50 complaints per day. This basic council work is contracted out by your LMP council to labour hire companies and clearly that's having an impact on how we're servicing Brisbane. Currently, when a mowing job is logged, it has to go through multiple levels, including internal and external contract managers, before it passes on to private companies and is actually done. If more basic council services like mowing were done in-house by a team of council employees, the jobs would not only get done faster, but also save ratepayers money in paying contract management fees. Residents are paying more and more but getting less and less in return under your LMP council. Lord Mayor, you just gave us an example of how you fast tracked inner-city projects when it suits you to get the publicity, but when... but you consistently fail to prioritise the suburbs. Why?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, the fundamental basis and premise of that question is completely incorrect, completely incorrect. We know that 86% of council's budget, of this budget that we're in this financial year, is being invested in the suburbs of Brisbane. Not in the CBD, in the suburbs of Brisbane. And we also know that any, any even superficial look at the history of this city will tell you a couple of things. Firstly, it was actually a Labour administration that outsourced grass cutting to contractors. Their mentors, Jim Surley, and when he's not in car parks, we're not in car parks except in cash, he was outsourcing council services to the private sector. And so, like, really, these guys and one female councillor have no credibility when it comes to this issue, no credibility whatsoever. Our record speaks for itself. We have continued to invest more and more and more in the suburbs, more and more and more on the basics. And you will not find a single year in Brisbane's history...
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
Just draw the Lord Mayor back here. It was actually 4,000 complaints?
Well, that actually wasn't the question. That was a political statement that rambled on for several minutes before he asked a question which was actually, I've already answered because it's not true. So, what we see is this administration investing more and more and more in basic services, more and more and more in suburbs, more and more and more on things like grass cutting. And it was actually, it was our side of politics that lifted the number of grass cuts in our city. And that has continued to be the case. We've done more grass cutting, more number of cuts...
Councillor Johnston, please.
...than any other administration before. And that's something that started proudly with Campbell Newman and has continued on through Graham Quirk and now myself. And we've maintained that high standard. And what you've got here is a desperate opposition with nothing, nothing, no agenda, no policies, no ideas, who, really, their only opportunity is, it rained a lot and some of our contractors got Covid, and so, oh, let's try and make an issue out of this. How pathetic. How pathetic are these people if they want to use the fact that it rained a lot and the fact that a number of our contractors got Covid? I don't know how we can sleep at night with ourselves. I mean, the reality is the funding for grass cutting has consistently stayed high. The level of service that we expect has consistently stayed high. And the only, the only, the only variation has been the combination of weather factors. And you know what? If you actually have your own grass to cut in your own yard, you would know that it has been an extremely rapid grass growing season. Now, we've all experienced, anyone that has a yard would know that. Every homeowner in Brisbane who has a yard knows that. And unless you'd been hiding under rock, you'd also know that we are in the middle of the Omnicrom pandemic wave. Hopefully, we'll towards the end of it, but that's what's been happening over summer. And so, if you want to make or try to score political points out of a wet season and people catching Covid, then you should be ashamed of yourself because the funding hasn't been changed, the funding hasn't been cut, and this so-called scheme of contracting out which you claim to rail against was introduced by that side of politics, by the Labour Party. They introduced the outsourcing of grass cutting companies. But I'll tell you, there is a slight difference compared to what Labour did. We give it to local companies. We give it to people that actually live here, not people based in New Zealand, like they did. They gave it to a New Zealand company. And so, we, wherever possible, try and give our work to local companies, which is why over 80% of all contracts go to local businesses here in South East Queensland. So, what we see here is another fake campaign from Labour, another fake campaign, trying to suggest that there's somehow been reductions in service or cuts to funding when what we've had is an extremely unusual grass growing season, a wet season, a hot wet season, and Covid, Covid. And so, you know, we apologise to the people of Brisbane that it is taking longer than possible, than practical to get on top of this, but we're doing our best. We're doing our absolute best and it's certainly not a matter of the funding not being available. And it has nothing to do with the model of contracting that they introduced.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, last Monday, the Queensland Government announced that Landon Levington Road in Eight Mile Plains has been selected for the delivery of a new satellite hospital, with the Eight Mile Plains Gateway Neighbourhood Plan close to adoption. Could you please update the chamber on the Queensland Government's approach to providing advice on the plan?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Huang for the question. And I'm sure you were as surprised as I was to learn of the new satellite hospital plan for the Eight Mile Plains area. While we always welcome new services and facilities for our residents, it was disappointing to hear about this major development from the state government via a social media announcement. We've been working with the local community for more than two years to prepare a neighbourhood plan for the Eight Mile Plains Gateway. It's an important plan for Brisbane that will be instrumental in driving the city's continued growth and evolution. There has been an enormous amount of work undertaken by our planning team with input from the community every step of the way to make sure we get this right. I would normally give the state government the benefit of the doubt here, but we've also taken them on the journey. They've been involved in this process from the start and have been involved through state interest checks and approval of our draft plans. So, to have this drop on us at this point in the process has really thrown a spanner in the works and is deeply disappointing. I feel like we've been intentionally left in the dark and I feel the community has been misinformed. For the benefit of the chamber, I would like to provide an overview of what steps we have taken to prepare this plan. We launched the plan in 2019 and from the initial feedback and findings, developed a draft strategy that introduced a new vision and key themes for consideration. The draft strategy is a fairly high-level plan that gives the community the opportunity to have their say early on in the process and helps shape the future of their area. It also gives the council an opportunity to test new ideas and gauge community sentiment around certain planning proposals. Mr Chair, at this stage in the planning process, did we hear from the state about plans for a new satellite hospital for the Eight Mile Plains area? No, we didn't. From the feedback received on the draft strategy, we forged ahead with our work to develop a draft neighbourhood plan. As you would know, Mr Chair, the draft neighbourhood plan is a far more detailed document that includes changes to codes, zones, overlays and other planning provisions in the city plan. This is where we get down to the detail and really get the community involved in what changes are likely to occur in their area in the future. The draft plan considers changes to residential densities, commercial centres and employment nodes, and how that might affect the broader transport network, including road hierarchies as well as active and public transport outcomes. We worked on these plans for about a year before passing them through this chamber and sending them to the state government for their first state interest review, before heading back out for the final round of community engagement. Mr Chair, was it at this stage in the planning process that we heard from the state government about their plans for such a major development in the heart of this neighbourhood plan area? Mr Chair, not a word. Our officers went back and forth with the state planning team about certain changes and inclusions in the draft plan for weeks, but at no point did they mention the intention to have this particular hospital. This could have been outlined at numerous points and it could have been included in the community consultation exercise. Now that we've completed the consultation on the draft plan, offices are currently reviewing feedback with the final plan expected to be adopted in the coming months, but we will now need to take a step back and take another look at the plans in light of this announcement. Already, I understand councillor Huang is fielding phone calls from the community concerned and confused about the sudden plans for the new satellite hospital and what impact this will have on local traffic and planning. I myself, as planning chair, have not received any correspondence from the minister, nor has the planning team. A social media post and media statement is all that we've got so far. I'll be following up on this matter and hope to be able to bring some more information and clarity to this particular matter to help councillor Huang locally, but you know, we would expect as a basic courtesy that the state would...
Lady Eva.
...that the state would be involved in this process and provide information when they have it to hand. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question's to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, councillor Marks advised us several weeks ago that temporary additional mowing support had been arranged for Jamburi Ward, Forest Lake Ward and Maruk Ward. She's been unable to tell us though, from where these additional mowing contractors were sourced. My question to you is, what contracts or areas of council have these additional mowing contractors been sourced? And how long are they being used in those three wards?
Thank you councillor Johnston. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Look, I'll have to get that information for councillor Johnston and make sure she gets that today, some stage during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, we have just heard from councillor Allen about the new satellite hospital earmarked for Levington Road in Eight Mile Plains. Notwithstanding council's lack of faith in the ministerial infrastructure designation process, history shows us that the state government has form when it comes to ignoring local traffic issues created by their hospitals. Can you please outline this history to the chamber, including any new examples?
Thank you councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Hammond for her question. It is a point of interest for our city. The provision of healthcare to all citizens is something that I know or I'm confident that all councillors value. And to be able to access those facilities is something that's really important. And to be able to access them not only safely as a patient, but also safely as a staff member, is something that's really important to me. So, I became aware of this satellite hospital. I would have to seek further information about what specifically a satellite hospital and how it differs from an ordinary hospital. However, I have become aware of this new proposal, which councillor Allen quite rightly indicated should have been recognised in earlier works if it was to be this, that we could have prepared for it. I was made aware of the satellite hospital through a letter that was provided to me, or an email I should say, from the state member for Streatham, Mr James Martin, who, he writes here that he was contacted by a number of constituents who were concerned about traffic issues from the new Eight Mile Plains satellite hospital and what it might cause to intersections along Underwood Road, a number of other intersections in the area. And he helpfully reminds us that they are Brisbane City Council. He also says, in relation to the calls for traffic lights, that he has requested that the project team responsible for the EMP satellite hospital liaise with Brisbane City Council about the important issue. Now, I trust Mr Martin's representations mean that he will be both publicly supportive of any works that happen, but more importantly, that this is an indication that the state are prepared to come to the table with funding. If this were a private hospital that came through the ordinary processes of council, through the infrastructure charge processes and other mechanisms, we would be able to charge fees to be able to upgrade the roads. Because this is a ministerial designation and done through the state government, no such provision is directly available. The only opportunity we have is to effectively ask for it. Now, there are only really, there are very limited ways to interpret what Mr Martin has said. The first one, and I'm going to choose to interpret it that way, is that he is offering political and financial support to complete the project. Because the only other way to interpret it is it's a cynical political email designed to protect him from future criticism. And I'm sure that a state member would never do such a thing, Mr Chair, that I'm sure that this is a genuine outreach to support his residents, not an attempt to shift blame to other local, to other levels of government. But I must warn Mr Martin that his attempts to support his community in making safe provision to the local hospitals through the state is likely to fail because of how little support the state provides to safe access to hospitals elsewhere in the city. Right now, this council is well advanced on a proposal to increase the safe access of the Prince Charles Hospital, a hospital not far from my constituency, within councillor Hammond's constituency. There is a proposal planned and advanced and ready to be implemented to upgrade the Hamilton Stave intersection, which is one of the principal staff accesses to the Prince Charles Hospital. Now, we are ready to go and not only is the state not cooperating and not providing financial support, they are interfering with our implementation of this important safety upgrade for this intersection. For those people who don't know it, it's on Hamilton Road and there has been water-filled barriers there to prevent a turn for some, I want to say, more than a year, four years, four years. I knew it was a long time. And we are ready to upgrade this intersection, yet the state is interfering with our implementation of this project. Now, this is a intersection where there was a fatality to a nurse as she was leaving the hospital at the end of her shift, yet the state will not assist us to help them. So, I suspect Mr Martin will not be able to get, you know...
Councillor Johnston, please. No shouting it. Councillor Johnston, councillor Johnston, please. Councillor Johnston, please. Councillor Wines.
When, you know, Mr Martin is unlikely to be successful because Mr Sullivan in the Stafford constituency has been not only unable to secure funds for the Prince Charles Hospital, but he has not even been able to assist in getting the appropriate approvals that we have been seeking for a long time. Not only, not only are they preventing us from fixing this dangerous intersection, they are now attempting to hold our feet to the fire to upgrade a separate road, not this road, a different road, to again, access their improved, their facilities inside, once again, with no financial support to council. They merely ask us once again to pay their bills for them.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. In 2021, bus drivers were assaulted 711 times while behind the wheel. That's around two attacks per day, where drivers were spat on, were punched, were kicked, were screened at, were sworn at and had objects thrown at them. The number of assaults last year was higher than pre-Covid levels in 2019, with 657 attacks recorded in that year. So, despite a huge drop in patronage, attacks have continued to go up. Labour councils have been calling for full driver protection barriers for years now, but you continue to ignore the issue and fail to protect council employees. So, Lord Mayor, what do you have to say to the thousands of council bus drivers who work in fear because you refuse to ensure their safety?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. It's interesting because last week we saw councillor Cassidy didn't do his homework and so he asked a question about living in Brisbane. And this week, he didn't do his homework again, but he got the RTBU to do his homework for him. And we know the union always pulls the strings when it comes to this leader of the opposition and his team. And we know sadly that it's a long history where no matter what a particular administration does when it comes to supporting our workforce, investing in our bus fleet, investing in safety measures, the RTBU always complains. It's never enough, it's never good enough, and they continue to try and politicise this issue, which is not a political issue. No administration ever before has invested more in our bus fleet and improving safety features. I remember when the RTBU pushed back against the installation of CCTV cameras in the buses because they were concerned about the privacy issues for their drivers that that may cause. I remember it distinctly, yet on the other hand, they're suggesting...
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, I know the Lord Mayor's obsessed with unions and the RTBU, but I didn't mention them. I talked specifically about driver barriers. The Lord Mayor has been raising that, no Deputy Mayor, I didn't mention the RTBU. I specifically talked about driver barriers, so I don't think that's relevant in any way, Chair.
Lord Mayor, can I bring you back to the question, please?
Oh, Mr Chair, I was answering the question. Councillor Cassidy doesn't like what I'm saying because of the... Look, I know he didn't mention the RTBU because he's seriously conflicted there because they funded his election campaign. So, you know, he knows better than to actually mention that they gave him the question.
Point of order.
But the reality is...
This is just really inappropriate. I mean, that's a lie. The RTBU has not funded my election campaign, Chair, but the question was specifically about driver barriers, not about election campaigns or funding or unions. I just draw you 711 assaults to a day. Can you just bring him back to that, please, Chair?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. If you can come back to the question, please.
We know that the RTBU has given hundreds of thousands of dollars to the Labour Party.
Point of order.
Again, relevance. The Lord Mayor is obsessed with the Labour Party, obsessed with unions, but he won't answer the question about assaults on bus drivers. I don't know why. Can you bring him back to it, Chair?
The question is about driver safety.
Mr Chair, I've got five minutes to answer the question and all of this is very relevant because it highlights the, it highlights the sheer hypocrisy here. It highlights what's really going on.
Excuse me, Lord Mayor. Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
It's my understanding that you determine what is relevant, not Chair. I think you have now three times said to the Lord Mayor he needs to come back to the question. He's just said he doesn't care what you say, he will determine what is relevant. Can you make a ruling on that, please?
Lord Mayor, the question is specific to driver safety. If I can bring you to that question, please.
Absolutely. That's exactly what I was talking about, driver safety. Because we know what the history of this issue is very clearly. We know that no administration has invested more, whether it's rolling out CCTV cameras to all of the fleet, whether it is investing in the anti-shatter film that goes on the windows, whether it's investing in the driver protection barriers, which were based on consultation with drivers, with drivers. Now, the problem... Now, the problem here is that councillor Cassidy knows a few things which he's not admitting. And these things are really important because he says we've called for full driver protection to be installed. Well, is that something that we can actually install into our bus fleet? Is that something that we can retrofit into our bus fleet? No, it's not. No, full driver protection currently exists on the commercial market. And you will remember councillor Cassidy that the current rollout of driver protection barriers based on the feedback of our drivers was funded jointly between the Brisbane City Council and Translink. Now, when we asked the Translink agency whether they would fund full driver protection barriers, they said no. So up in George Street, they said, we understand that there's nothing available on the market and that what you put into the buses is based on driver feedback, so we're very happy with that. So up in George Street, they're happy with what we've done. They funded part of what we've done, yet councillor Cassidy sits here and pretends that he thinks that it's not enough. We did it based on the feedback of drivers. Not on the feedback of the unions, not on the feedback of councillor Cassidy, but on the feedback of drivers, of drivers. We even did a trial programme. We fitted several different barriers to different buses and we let, we let the drivers try them out.
Councillor Cassidy, please. The question is being answered.
We let the drivers try them out and the drivers picked the one that we've used. The drivers picked that. And so councillor Cassidy thinks he knows better than the drivers. He thinks that we can go and get a product that doesn't exist. And if you want to see the true record here, what you need to see is that in the brand-new, the brand-new Brisbane Metro vehicles, because they were designed from scratch, they have full driver protection. So where we can do that by designing a new vehicle from scratch, full driver protection has been installed. Not because we don't want to do it, the reality is, and councillor Cassidy knows that you cannot feasibly fit driver protection into the existing bus fleet that is a full enclosure.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Adam.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympics and Paralympic Games, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, Queensland's international borders have officially reopened and Brisbane Airport has already welcomed hundreds of international arrivals on opening day. Could you please update the chamber on the importance of this occasion, including what the Shrinna Council is doing to leverage this event for Brisbane business?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Adam for the question because it has been a long time coming, 703 days in fact. And I'm sure all of us were loving seeing the TV and hearing the radio commentary of the people as they are greeting old family members and brand-new family members that they'd never even seen before in the last two years at Brisbane Airport over the last couple of days. It was March 2020 since COVID has swept the world and the borders were shut. And the reopening yesterday is a momentous occasion and one that I'm sure everyone in this chamber and across the country welcomes. We know that the tourism industry lost a total of $80 billion in revenue over this two-year period, and it's going to take some time before they really start to see things get back to where they were. And it's not just about welcoming back those new travellers, it's about also rebuilding the workforce and the local businesses that support our tourism industry. Our retail, hospitality workers, hotels and tourism operators that have essentially been in caretaker mode, waiting to get the green light to open borders so they can start planning ahead, need to rebuild their businesses with confidence. And we're doing everything we can to ensure that those Brisbane businesses get back on their feet as soon as possible, particularly after the last couple of months, which has been, from all reports, the worst part of the pandemic for many businesses when it should have been their best of that retail shopping at Christmas. So the Shrinna Council is determined to be the most small-business-friendly local government in the country, and we are certainly proud of our record when it comes to stepping in and helping Brisbane businesses, community groups and residents during the pandemic. More than $60 million in economic relief and stimulus measures have been paid to those groups heavily impacted over the last two years. Short, sharp and targeted relief has helped businesses get through this difficult and very long two years. And now with the full reopening of domestic and international borders, we are thrilled in working with the Brisbane Economic Development Agency to unveil our latest and greatest tourism campaign for Brisbane. The campaign will showcase our city's, some as always, climate to attract those sun-seeking travellers from down south who might be thinking, particularly with $22 on Jetstar or Webjet, that they may come up to Brisbane and Queensland in the next couple of months as it gets bleak and dreary down south. It's bright, it's bold, it's bubbly, and it could be not timed more perfectly. I'm going to show the show-and-tell of the B and E sign, which gives you an indication of the colours, the retro and the feeling of fun and party that we're trying to show to those down south. We are already the nation's fastest-growing capital, and as the world's eyes turn towards us as the newest destination for Olympic and Paralympic Games, there's even more interest, both domestically and internationally, in discovering more about Brisbane. So this exciting new campaign will take advantage of that interest and showcase what we have to offer. We all know, Brisbaneites know how great our city is, and it just keeps getting better. But we need to remind people down south that they may not be aware of all the fantastic new destinations and attractions we've created in recent years. So the locally-produced campaign, which features destinations like Fortitude Valley, Moreton Island and House with Wolves, taps into everything that is uniquely Brisbane, reflecting our enviable outdoor lifestyle with over 300 days of sunshine a year, our vibrant and bustling inner city and our expansive green spaces, natural wonders and welcoming suburbs right across the city. But most importantly, it shines a light on the stories of Brisbane, the people and our communities. The campaign is 100% made in Brisbane, utilising music from local artists and designed by a cohort of talented Brisbane creatives who love and know our city so well. It will target audience in key interstate markets across TV, video-on-demand, out-of-home, digital and social, and it'll be seen much more around the country than here in Brisbane. As we head into our winter period, we hope that all these people in Victoria, New South Wales and South Australia decide they want a holiday in the sun with plenty to see and do. We're also ramping up our calendar events of entertainment to make sure there's plenty to see day and night with activities with yesterday's launch of the NRL Magic Round, one of our city's biggest and best events on our tourism and events calendar. So not just for footy fans, it's for our local pubs, clubs, restaurants and hotel operators who all get the benefits of what we saw last year was a booked-out city, and we're hoping we can spread that love even wider this year as well. We'll be coupling it with major events with a suite of local and dining and tourism campaigns to make sure we maximise those visitors and we spread the love right across the economic sphere in Brisbane. I look forward to updating the chamber on what's happening in Brisbane over the coming months.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal, councillor Adam Allen. At 105 and 107 Bow Desert Road, Maruka, this LMP-run council approved the development of a childcare centre. This approval included the retention of the existing Charming Character Home on that property. The Character Home, however, has been totally demolished by the developer. All that's left is a pile of rubble. Despite not complying with the conditions of development approval, this LMP-run council has not fined the developer or taken any infringement action against them. I've written multiple times to the LMP Lord Mayor, councillor Adrian Shrinna, and his LMP-run council, seeking an explanation. But all I've received in return is radio silence. So I'll ask here instead, face-to-face, why has this LMP-run council taken no infringement action against the developer for demolishing this Maruka Character Home?
Thanks. Councillor Griffiths. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Griffith for the question. In terms of the background, council approved an application for a childcare centre on Bow Desert Road in June 2020. The approval also included the partial demolition of the pre-1946 house on the site. A minor change was approved in February of 2022, which allowed replacement of some materials like-for-like. In late March, sorry, 2021, in late March 2021, council received a complaint regarding the demolition of a house at the site. Right after receiving the complaint, a site visit was organised to ground truth what had actually occurred. The team saw that the house had been removed. However, there were several pieces of the house that had been set aside and were marked as protected, intending, intending to be reinstated.
Councillors, please.
Intending to be.
Councillors, please.
Intending to be reinstated. While it may not be in its original location, the front facade, the front facade of the house, the bay window and balustrading is on the site and is required to re-establish the character elements of the building. Since this time, officers have met with the builder and the certifier to establish the intent behind the removal, including the forthcoming Building Works Programme. The like-for-like replacement of some materials and the full demolition of other parts resulted in a work site that did not reflect the ultimate intent, which is the replacement of those character elements. Our compliance team will continue to proactively monitor this site to ensure that parts of the facade that are currently stored on-site are repurposed and put back in place in accordance with the approved plans. As part of the investigation, a clear and concise outline of the responsibilities was provided to the builder to remind them of their obligations under the city plan as well as the Planning Act. We take protection of character in Brisbane seriously and.
Councillor Griffiths, please. Councillor Griffiths, please. Yeah, councillor Griffiths, I will warn you.
So in the context of councillor Griffith's question, there are character elements of that building that have been retained and will be reinstated. There were elements of the original building that were approved for demolition. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee. Councillor Howard, the second round of the Better Suburbs Grants is now open for applications. Could you please update the chamber on the outcomes of the first round of grants, including how long community groups have to apply for the second round?
Thank you, councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you I thank councillor Mackay for his interest in the Grants Programme. Council recognises the important work of not-for-profits and community groups that help make Brisbane an inclusive, resilient, connected and healthy city. By supporting the community and sporting clubs across Brisbane, the Shrinna Council is able to foster and assist these organisations in upgrading and enhancing their community facilities, allowing them to reach their full potential. A key mechanism of support that council provides to community groups is through our Grants Programme, which sees council assist community organisations right across Brisbane. This gives community groups access to much-needed funds to support their members and the wider Brisbane community. In particular, the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants is a new two-part programme designed to assist not-for-profit community organisations, including council lesses and community organisations that own a community facility. The community support category of this Grant Programme is a simple, fast and flexible programme that supports not-for-profit groups to deliver projects that respond to the needs of the community. Up to $10,000 was awarded to community organisations for this Grants Programme last year, with a total of 96 organisations getting rapid access to much-needed funding for projects such as facilities maintenance and organisational development. The response we got from sporting clubs and community organisations for this Grants Programme was overwhelmingly positive, with these community groups getting access to much-needed funds through this simple and effective Grants Programme. Further, the community facilities category of the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants has been designed for community organisations to assist with the funding of improvement and development works across community facilities. Funding is available for both planning and design, along with construction phases of projects, providing grants of up to $200,000 for community groups across Brisbane. Earlier this month, eight community groups who had applied for these grants were notified that their applications had been successful, allowing these groups to undertake new works on their valued community facilities. Kitchen renovations, upgraded amenities, new storage facilities and retractable shade cover are a few of the projects that will be made possible at not-for-profit community organisations across Brisbane through this Grants Programme. To speak on the impact this Grants Programme will have on Brisbane community groups, I'd just like to take a moment to talk about the successful organisations and their respective upgrades. The Algesta Sports Club were given a grant to undertake kitchen renovation to support bowls events held at the club. Wavell Heights Community Hall was given a grant to improve unused space, including replacing kitchen and floor. This will enable an increase in patronage and rental returns and provide employment opportunities for young people. The Bulymba Community Centre, an upgrade of toilet facilities to support community members of all families. And yes, indeed, yahoo. Karana Downs Pony Club, which is to engage a town planner to complete and lodge a development application for storage facilities. The Everton Park Bowls and Community Club, which was to install a retractable shade cover over synthetic green. And I know that councillor Davis and the Lord Mayor were out there bowling a bowl or two. Is that what you say? I think that was what you were doing, and they were very excited, and so fantastic there. The Brisbane North Hockey Centre, replacement of artificial turf surface and shock pad on sporting field. Stevens Croquet Club, installation of LED lighting. And the North East Street City Farm, a much-loved part of Brisbane, construction of a new stage roof, water tanks, screens and landscaping to support community gardeners and events. The breadth of these upgrades shows just how flexible the design of this Grant Programme has been, allowing community groups to access funding for a wide variety of facility improvements and upgrades. I'm very much looking forward to the outcomes of these improvements across Brisbane and how this investment by the Shrinna Council will continue to benefit the community organisations who help make Brisbane such a great place to live, work and relax. While the outcome of the first round of the Community Facility Campaign has been announced, the second round for this Grant Programme is now open for community organisations to apply. And applications for round two are open until the 28th of March 2022. So I encourage all of you in the chamber today to share this information with the community groups in your ward. While the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants is one of council's most prominent Grants Programme, it's far from the only programme that the Shrinna Council.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. That does end question time. We move on to the next item on the agenda, the Establishment and Coordination Committee. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 14th of February 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 14th of February 2022 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, once again, in this question time, we've seen some very concerning trends from the opposition in the way that they approach their job, and it's very telling. So let me go through point by point, question by question, where they were heading today. Now, councillor Griffiths asked a question, and he talked about 4,000 complaints about grass cutting. If you listen to their wording, it's very interesting, very much the deliberate choice of the word complaint. Well, where did he get that information from? And what did the information really say? Well, it was the response to a question on notice. Now, councillor Griffiths asked, how many complaints have been made to Brisbane City Council in regards to grass cutting not being done, broken down by suburban ward in the last three months? That was his question. What was the answer? Council does not specifically record data for complaints only. Figures provided are custom and inquiries, which includes requests for information, complaints or a status update on an existing job. So these are not all complaints. You can see, you can see the devious misrepresentation of this information here. And so a resident.
Councillors on my left, please.
A resident may ring up the call centre and say, I'd just like to find out when the grass in the park is getting cut. The, the.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
Call centre operator will tell them that's due for this particular time. And councillor Griffiths has misrepresented that as a complaint, when it was quite. And Councillor Griffiths has misrepresented that as a complaint, when it was quite clearly answered here that these are not all complaints. And so we see time and time again, a deliberate attempt to misrepresent.
Councillors, please. Councillors, please. Councillor Johnston, please. Enough.
And so they squeal really loudly when they're being called out. They squeal really loudly because we're on to them, we know what their tactic is, and their tactic is not actually to hold us accountable on facts, but to misrepresent those facts, week after week, time after time. Now, we saw another example where Council had quite clearly conditioned a character property to be retained and rebuilt, and, and that property, at this point in time, has been dismantled but is going to be rebuilt. And so, and so what, what we see once again, as Councillor Allen clearly highlighted, what we see once again is a complete misrepresentation of the facts. A complete.
Councillors, please.
Misrepresentation of the facts. Now, I'll give you an example. When this building was restored, was it first significantly modified and demolished? Yes, it was. And in fact, I remember going into the main auditorium and seeing excavators in there digging out the ground because we put in an underground kitchen which previously didn't exist in this building. Now, if you use Labour's logic, oh, the LMP's demolishing City Hall, oh, they're outrageous. We have required that particular building to be rebuilt and restored.
Councillors, please.
And so, once again, Labour misrepresents the facts because they've got nothing. All they've got is misrepresentation. And so, and it's not just Labour either, because Councillor Johnston asked a question, which was answered in the Questions on Notice today, and let me, let me read it out for you. Question one, she was asking, the, the nature of her question was to ask which services in wards had received a reduction to boost the services in the additional wards. That, that was the question. And, and the answer here is.
Councillor Johnston, please.
No wars.
Councillor Johnston, cease your interjecting, please. I will, Councillor Johnston, cease interjecting. Councillor Johnston, I will warn you.
Oh, point of order, Mr Chair. Did you hear that? Did you hear that?
No, Councillor, I was trying to warn the councillor.
Councillor Johnston claimed that I was deliberately lying. I demand that she withdraws that.
Councillor Johnston, please withdraw that con, your, your conduct is unsuitable, Councillor Johnston.
The Lord Mayor is lying, I didn't ask him about wards.
Councillor Johnston, I shall, I ask you to cease your behaviour, please.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Sri.
Thanks. Just mindful that while you have ruled in the past that calling someone a liar is inappropriate, and I respect that, I think it's still is important that we are able to say such and such a claim is a lie, or to say that someone is lying about a sim.
Councillor Sri, it was, it was an interjection. The behaviour is unacceptable.
I'm just keen to make sure you don't make a rule in saying that we can't call something a lie, because that would be ridiculous.
I was calling the interjection. Lord Mayor.
So Councillor Johnston submitted to Questions on Notice a question. Question, Council has provided temporary new mowing contract to support Jamboree, Forest Lake and Marooka Wards, which were drawn from other wards, she claimed. Which wards? Well, and the, the answer is no, they weren't drawn from other wards, they were additional resources. Councillor Johnston knew that, it was answered in the questions.
Excuse me, Lord Mayor. Excuse me, Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnston, I consider you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct. In accordance with Section 21.4 of a meeting's local law, I hereby request that you cease your interjections and refrain from displaying this unsuitable meeting conduct.
So it was quite clear that Councillor Johnston's question had been answered, and it wasn't only answered in the Questions on Notice responses that were received today by everyone, it was also, I'm told, answered in the committee meeting last week as well. So, like, really, this misrepresentation needs to stop. This misrepresentation.
Excuse me, Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnston, as you continue to fail to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, in accordance with Section 21.8 of the meeting's local law, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct, your conduct, and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And it is part of a disturbing trend from those opposite. Now, I will exclude Councillor Sri from that because he does things a little bit differently, but certainly we see both the Labour councillors and the independent councillor using the same tactic week after week in this place and also in public. And that is, they misrepresent entirely the facts of the situation. Misrepresent entirely, Mr Chair, and it is incredibly disappointing, and I will call them out on it. I will call them out on it. Now, it, now this, this would be amusing if it wasn't so serious. Now, we know that Councillor Cassidy loves a good read in question time because he takes his role so seriously, and so he gets out his book, and what was he reading today? A book called Facts and Other Lies. Facts and Other Lies. Now, what's that book about? This book, this is the blurb, puts fake news in its historical context and explains how disinformation has fractured society and even threatened democracy itself. The culmination of a journey of online radicalisation that began the weaponisation of disinformation by political leaders. Now, the interesting thing is, from reading the blurb, it's clear that this book is railing against disinformation. Yet it's quite clear that Councillor Cassidy is seeking tips from this book, because we've seen time and time again him using those exact tactics, those exact tactics. This is the group of councillors that started a fake news website, trying to con Brisbane residents into thinking it was a legitimate news source, but really it was Labour Party propaganda. This is the councillor and the group of councillors that week after week misrepresent what happens in this chamber for cynical political purposes, week after week, and we are going to call them out on it, week after week. Fake news is not funny, Councillor Cassidy, it is disgraceful, it is something that genuinely undermines our democratic system. And so I call on you, Councillor Cassidy, stop the fake news, read that book with an open eye and think about your own behaviour, and think about the behaviour of your team, because you're perpetuating week after week, fake news and disinformation. It is disgusting, it is disgusting. Now, moving on to other items, Mr Chair. Oh, no, there's more, there's more where that came from, and what I say is batter up, Councillor Cassidy, batter up!
Councillors, please, order, please.
This week, we'll be lighting up on Saturday, all of the council assets in purple and white to celebrate the amazing work that Chaplain Watch does. They're having a fundraising ball, and all proceeds from this dinner will be sent to Chaplain Watch's late-night rest and recovery centre on Wickham Street. This is a centre that provides care and support for those who need a safe space after a night out, and obviously it's a critical service and we appreciate what Chaplain Watch does. Now, today, as you're aware, marks 30 years since we last got a say on daylight saving. Thirty years, and so in, in 30 years, the state of Queensland has changed significantly, there's no doubt about that.
Councillor Strunk, please.
Councillor Strunk interjected that people, people don't want daylight saving even more than they did 30 years ago. Well, let's see about that.
Councillor Strunk, you don't want me to, do I have to name you?
I wonder, I wonder if Councillor Strunk is going to have trouble milking the cows or the curtains are going to fade. I wonder.
Lord Mayor, your, your time has expired.
Move for an extension. Seconded.
Extension of time for the Lord Mayor has been moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by Councillor Landis. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Now, I've been encouraging councillor coming to join the LMP week after week, but I think Councillor Strunk should join the Cataparty. I think he'd be more suited up there. And look, with that attitude, he's clearly out of touch with the vast majority of Brisbane residents and South East Queensland residents, because even 30 years ago, we saw a really strong yes result here in South East Queensland, even 30 years ago. But one of the interesting things about the last 30 years and this particular issue is that anyone, anyone in the Queensland population that is under the age of 48 did not get a say on this. Now, I'm not going to ask anyone to nominate whether they're above or below that age, but I will volunteer that I am below that age because I was 14, I was 14 when this vote happened, and I didn't get a say, and literally more than 3 million other Queensland residents didn't get a say either. And it's not just the people under 48 who didn't get a say, it's all of the people that in the last 30 years have moved here from other places, or in fact, you know, have come from interstate or overseas. And we know that there are tens of thousands, if not millions, of those people. So out of the state's population of just over 5 million, I estimate that more than 3 million of those people did not get a say on daylight saving. And so what I've proposed today is that we use the opportunity of the next two summers to trial daylight saving here in Queensland. So the next summer period, so we're talking about summer 2022-23 and summer 23-24 across the state, and then we use the opportunity.
Councillors, please.
And we.
Councillor Johnston, please. Lord Mayor.
Unlike others in this chamber, Councillor Cassidy, I have no intention of going to any other level of government, and I know that you've long harboured ambitions to be the Member for Lily, and you're stymied on that, but I can tell you, I can tell you, I can tell you that my personal belief is that the state government should be abolished. And I've said that before, we have too many levels of government, and the state government is the one that needs to go. But having said that, so you can be sure that I, I won't be running for any state seats, and I have no intention of running for any federal seats either, because I'm enjoying this role leading the city of Brisbane. But what we can, what we can see going forward is an opportunity to have a two-summer trial over the next two summers, and then in the year 2024, where there are two statewide elections, the opportunity for people to have their say. And so I think it'd be ideal if either at the local government election in March 2024 or the state election in October 2024, then people could also have a say on this issue. Now, I acknowledge that there are some people who say, oh, we have the same debate every year. Well, there's a reason for that, there's a reason for that. Here's an opportunity to put it to bed. If, if you are for it, great, have the opportunity of the trial and then vote yes. If you're against it, that's also great, you've got the opportunity to vote no. But let's deal with this issue because unlike so many things that the state government does that makes our life harder, this will make our life easier, this will make our life better, this will improve the livability of our state and our city. And it's a simple thing, it is a genuinely simple thing, doesn't cost a lot, it is a simple thing, and what's more, there's an opportunity for a two-year trial or a two-summer trial. And that way, we can make sure that people try before they buy, they've experienced what daylight saving is like here in Queensland, and then they can make an informed decision. So let's celebrate the 30-year anniversary by actually getting some positive action here and then resolving this ongoing issue. Another issue that was particularly relevant in recent times was the planned eviction by the state government of a number of tourism operators at Dockside Ferry Terminal or the Dockside Marina, and we've seen this as a long, ongoing saga on the Brisbane River. Now, many of these same operators originally were located underneath the Riverside Expressway at the docks down there. Now, they were made homeless because of the state government's Queensworth-Prisbon programme, and despite ongoing lip service to the concept that they would be provided with alternative facilities, all that has happened since then is they've been shunted from place to place with no real solution in sight. Now, if Brisbane is truly a river city, and that's an aspiration that we have to show to the world for the Olympics, then we need river tourism businesses, we need those tourism opportunities on the Brisbane River, we need the charter boat services, we need those wonderful opportunities that these operators are offering. And so to simply punt them from a marina with a matter of days' notice, with no alternative places to go, is not dealing with a situation which the state government has long promised to fix. And so I have asked to sit down with the minister responsible, Minister Scott Stewart. I've met him before, once or twice, he seems like a reasonable guy, and I hope that we can get a good, long-term solution here that will see these businesses continue to operate and thrive in the city of Brisbane. There's literally hundreds of jobs at risk if we don't get this right, and we need to see appropriate action in terms of the state government response. It was great, even though she's not here today, to be out on the weekend with Councillor Marks at the Runcorn Family Fund Day.
Point of order, Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. I, I'd just like to move that under Section 12, subsection 3, that I move the suspension of standing orders.
Okay. We have a motion for the suspension of standing rules. Councillor Cassidy, you may proceed.
Thanks very much, Chair. This is very emergent, in fact, I just received an email today, so this couldn't have been put on the agenda yesterday. Something came to light recently where this LNP administration started using the term Shrima Council, and we heard from the Lord Mayor last week that that was a very deliberate act to rebrand the entire Brisbane City Council as the Shrima Council, which we all know in reality is a, a political term, it's a political move to rebrand the Brisbane City Council as the Shrima Council. What they have also done, Chair, the LNP administration, is continued to use the Olympic and Paralympic logos with their so-called Shrima Council material, which is very political. So we, we have written, we have written to the Australian Olympic Committee and to the International Olympic Committee, and have today just received word that in their view, that is in fact, and I'll read, taglines such as the Shrima Council are not appropriate because they are in fact a political slogan. So I think what we need to do as a council here today in suspending standing orders is debate a motion that the use of Shrima Council be banned because that is a political term, or alternatively, or alternatively, Lord Mayor laughs along, the, this is the, this is the view of the AOC and the IOC, Lord Mayor, alternatively, that. That's right. Or alternatively, Chair, alternatively, we could have a motion that LNP councillors, while they use the Shrima Council political tagline, do not use and do not try and politically profit, I suppose, from the Olympics. So I think this is, this would be a great thing for us to debate today.
Thank you. The motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules to allow a motion to be moved. All in favour of the motion to suspend standing rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it. Division.
Division.
Division being called by Councillor Cassidy and Councillor Cook. Thank you. Please ring the bells. Thank you. Councillors, the division is over, the motion to suspend standing rules. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Are there any extensions?
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour, six, sorry, eighteen against and one abstention.
I declare that motion lost. Lord Mayor, we return to. Lord Mayor, we return to ENC report.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, that was a fascinating development. What we saw, let's be very clear, is the equivalent of someone in the federal parliament asking for the term Morrison Government to be banned. What we saw is the equivalent of someone in the state parliament asking for the term Palashay Government to be banned. Like, this is how extraordinary, like, you know what? He's also taking tips from Vladimir Putin. He is also taking tips from Vladimir Putin. That's what he's taking tips from because you know what? If he doesn't like what his opponents do, he wants to shut them down, to gag them, then to make them disappear. And that is what is happening here. This is Labour's red DNA coming out. They want to shut down any kind of political debate and ban the use of a term, of a term that is perfectly legitimate and is perfectly in sync with the other two levels of government. So what we see here is really quite extraordinary. But there's also something interesting going on behind the scenes here because previously we had had Olympic approval for exactly what was happening here. Previously, we'd had that approval and then somehow up in George Street, a complaint was made. Oh, I don't know by who. I don't know by who. But, oh, he's, he's fessing up. He made a complaint. And so.
Councillor Cassidy, please. Councillor Cassidy, please.
And so basically, we've seen, because of councillor Cassidy's political interference in the Olympic matters here, we have seen, we have seen here.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
We've seen here a change to the advice previously given by the Olympics. And so, you know.
Councillor Cassidy, please, stop. Lord Mayor.
Now, I certainly hope that the Palashay Government would never associate themselves with the Olympics. I mean, that would never happen, would it? That should be banned according to councillor Cassidy's logic. I mean, this is ridiculous. These sort of arguments that we're seeing here are just ridiculous and everyone can see what they are. Everyone can see what they are. It's just petty party politics. It is petty politics. It's like, oh, we can't let the council be associated with the Olympics. Oh, possibly, you know, can't possibly let that happen. We can't let this team of councillors who boldly went after the Olympics despite the murmurings against it from over here, despite the murmurings against it from over here, we went after the Olympics, we helped get the Olympics and now we're not allowed to talk about the Olympics in association with our council. Is that right? Is that what we're seeing here? So all I can say, councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair, is this. We will follow whatever guidance is given by the IOC. We will happily follow it.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, second.
We have a motion for an extension of time for the Lord Mayor, moved by councillor Adams and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnston.
I'm really concerned about councillor Johnston because she's concerned that someone else is speaking too long in this place, you know, and, and that is quite amusing to me. There is quite amusing to me from the person that speaks the most, the most out of any councillor. She doesn't like other people speaking. Mr Chair, there's a lot to cover today. There are a lot of important issues and there is a lot of misinformation to call out. So I will confirm through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Cassidy, that we will comply with whatever advice is given by the IOC as we have always done. And so our, I guess, processes were based on previous advice from the IOC, which was ticked off, which was ticked off. And so thank you councillor Cassidy. I'm sure you will sleep better tonight in knowing that you tried to ban the Shrinna Council from saying Shrinna Council. And look, you, you, yeah, well done, well done, well done, that man. So in front of us, we have the annual operational plan and quarterly financial report, which is once again indicative of strong and responsible financial management of this city's finances. It is once again indicative of a organisation and a leadership team that believes in balanced budgets, it believes in cutting the cloth to measure, it believes in investing in infrastructure and running a responsible, healthy budget. And that's exactly what, once again, we see here today. We see also some of the ongoing impacts of the COVID pandemic and the related economic impacts. But we also see that as a result of the decisions we've made and the changes we've made and the responsiveness that we've had, that we've still been able to keep this budget strong and balanced despite all of those challenges. And that is something that certainly has not happened up at George Street. We've seen them throw the Financial Responsibility Rulebook out the window and then we have an extraordinary situation where the treasurer literally taunts us and says we should go into deficit. Wow, the treasurer of the state is saying that we should go into deficit, only because it makes him look better. But the reality is we believe in balanced budgets and we believe in responsible financial management and, and nothing the treasurer will say is going to change that. Now, this report includes a significant decrease in revenue from contributions, subsidies and grants compared to the last, this time last year. This is mainly due to state capital transfers in twenty twenty, though this is offset by, somewhat by grant funding from the Morrison Government. Does he want to ban me from saying that? There has also been a decrease in developer contributions in the year and this represents, obviously, the challenging situation when it comes to getting construction projects underway. And those developer contributions relate to, directly to activity in the construction industry. So as new projects start or finish and developer contributions are paid to go towards infrastructure, there has been a significant reduction in those as a result of the COVID pandemic and the economic impacts. And so that's resulted in a lower amount of collected infrastructure charges. The report also highlights the impact of our rate freeze and also the fee waivers in twenty twenty when compared to revenue this year. The recent action that we've introduced to provide further financial relief with a package of at least five million for business and community groups and then a subsequent package of at least one point seven million when it relates to parking and parking fee relief, turning off the meters for the month of February and discounted parking in King George Square and Wicken Terrace. Obviously, we're not out of the woods yet and there's ongoing challenges. We see a situation where right across all three levels of government and across industry, construction costs continue to rise and the ability to accurately predict what something is going to cost is getting harder and harder. We see the potential impacts of international circumstances, not only COVID but things like war and what that war might mean when it comes to supply chains internationally and the cost of basic commodities as well. We know that wartime situations mean that often oil prices go up. We know that that then flows on to petrol prices and diesel prices here in Australia, even if the event is somewhere on the other side of the world. And so we continue to face uncertain circumstances. We continue to face significant pressure when it comes to the cost of doing things and that is not something that we are alone in. It is something that is faced right across all levels of government and in fact, across industry. And we know that that is a major issue out there. And so when you look at the quarterly financial report, I draw councillor's attention to page four and the performance ratios because these tell you an important picture. And what they tell you is that all of our targets are being met when it comes to the different ratios, whether it's interest coverage, debt servicing to total income, net debt to total income, working capital, total assets and liabilities and average debt maturity. All of those targets and financial ratios are being met. And so we will continue to do what we need to do, not only to fund the basic services, where eighty-six percent of all our funding is going out to the suburbs, but also to build the infrastructure our city needs and invest in those major infrastructure projects. And while doing so, make sure that we are Australia's most small business friendly council, make sure we are investing in a cleaner, greener future for our city and also at the same time, keeping the budget strong and balanced. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on clause A, the only item before us today in ENC. And I'm glad we finally got there after twenty minutes of the Lord Mayor talking about Labour, talking about me, talking about councillor Griffiths, talking about councillor Johnston, councillor Strunk, the voice of reason over our right shoulder, got quite a few mentions there. And the Lord Mayor talked about all these other fights that he's having with the state government and the state government, again, the state government this, the state government that. Daylight savings, abolishing state governments. We went right around the world, Chair, and then he spent a couple of minutes, couple of minutes, couple of minutes on ENC, on the, on the item before us today, which is the Operational Plan Progress Quarterly Financial Report for the second quarter, which represents the halfway mark of council's twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget and how that's faring for the people of Brisbane, of course. And it's safe to say, Chair, that under this LNP administration is not faring very well at all. This budget and this budget review tells the tale of gross mismanagement, delays, cost blowouts and a huge surge in rates revenue. Rates revenue is up by forty-one million dollars compared to the same time last year. So despite this huge, this huge hike in rates from residents, services are lagging badly. We've heard all about that today. You know, people can't even get their grass mowed in suburbs and the Lord Mayor says, the Lord Mayor for months and the Lord Mayor says, no, no, people aren't, people aren't ringing council to complain about long grass. They're, they're ringing council to maybe compliment the long, the uncut grass or just chat about how green it is maybe or, you know, the hue of the colour of it. The Lord Mayor is under this strange belief that when people call the call centre and make inquiries about their local parks and public spaces not being mown, that's not a complaint. But anyway, that's how he operates, Chair. Capital and expense at this point of the financial year is down a hundred and forty million dollars. So forty-one million dollars extra in rates from Brisbane residents, but a hundred and forty million dollars less being spent on basics out in the suburbs. So we're seeing ten million dollars worth of delays to road projects, including the Beams Road project, Newham and Wecker Roads, Gresham Street Bridge and of course, that cost play out on the Intrapilly Roundabout. The LNP's Bendy Bus Project, aka the so-called Brisbane Metro, is delayed again by ten million dollars as well. No surprises there, of course. That's a perennial quarterly delay on that project. And if these buses, of course, were made here by manufacturers in Brisbane, supporting Brisbane jobs and supporting industry here in Brisbane instead of in Europe, Chair, we'd not only be supporting economic activity, but this project maybe perhaps would have been delivered on time and the cost blowout certainly would have been less. But instead, of course, we've got LNP councillors and this LNP mayor boasting about how that pilot Bendy Bus is sailing off the coast of Europe currently. That's an absolute insult, a slap in the face to local manufacturers and local workers, Lord Mayor. Ferry and bus maintenance has been delayed by four point five million dollars. I think there is the answer when we ask about where those, where those, where the maintenance on those monohull ferries is, is at. Well, it's at nowhere. And we have recently found out that they're still assessing whether they keep any of them at all. Maybe they'll repair some of them, maybe they'll get rid of them, maybe, maybe, just maybe, they'll continue to lease these privately, these privately owned boats, continuing to cost rate payers more and more and more in the long run. And we see why, because four point five million dollars of that ferry maintenance budget that should have been, should have been expended by the end of December has been gutted from that project. Now, this Lord Mayor, this LNP mayor has not only been cutting public transport services but leaving those vehicles and vessels to rot, Chair. There's over five million dollars in delays to park projects, including at Borambin, Victoria Park, his great big centrepiece, the thing he likes to advertise all the time. That's his sort of vision, he says, and what maybe be his legacy in a couple of years' time when he's gone. But that one's been delayed. The Combsley Beach Reserve's delayed. Bradbury Park at Kedron has been delayed. There's even a delay to the Nudgy Recreation Reserve. So not only, not only did this LNP administration completely gut that project, but they're now also delaying the delivery of the scaled back project, the one that they, they had promised the community, then scaled it back, now they're not delivering that one at all. There's eight point five million dollar delay to stormwater and drainage projects. There's no wonder cricket fields in Tinglepa or properties in Hemant are being inundated with water after just light rain when we see eight point five million dollar delays to stormwater and drainage projects. I find out in my own ward that there are, there are tidal devices on the stormwater drains that have been faulty since at least, since at least July last year. Well, that's when they were found out, potentially longer. And the Lord Mayor says there is no money in the maintenance budget for those projects. But there's eight point five million dollars here that has, that has been unspent in those projects. So it's little wonder, little wonder when our council officers say we simply can't deliver these basic maintenance projects with the money the Lord Mayor gives us because that money's not even being spent on planned projects, let alone no money being there for unplanned projects. And again, residents are paying more and more, forty-one million dollars more in this quarter alone and getting less and less for it. Here's a doozy, Chair, six point eight million dollars worth of delays to community facility maintenance and improvements. Well, that one, that one sounds familiar to us, doesn't it? They, they, you know, they won't perform basic maintenance to places like at Maruka Bowls Club we hear. They would rather roll the bulldozers in at East Brisbane Bowls Club. It's cheaper, it's much cheaper to just bulldoze these community facilities like we see at East Brisbane. Yeah, yeah, certainly, certainly, yeah, we know they have form when it comes to that. Certainly much easier for an LNP council to allow development on these sites than maintain them and we've seen them try to do that before. And we know why it's so hard to get money spent on community facilities under this LNP administration because the small amount of money that they do allocate, they don't even spend, Chair. We've also got a six hundred thousand dollar underspend in the mosquitoes, mosquito treatment programme. So again, they, they had one good quarter, I think, where they expended, they expended the, the budget on time for that one. But when you go back over the last five or six years, Chair, this is the story of this administration's action on mosquitoes in our outer suburbs. Habitual and continual underspending. It takes years and years for new equipment to be rolled out to those teams. Those teams stay stagnant. For the last five years, there's only been seventeen members of that mosquito spraying team, even though there's been exponential growth in that time in the rates revenue to council and in development and population growth in areas that are affected by salt marsh mosquitoes. And yet again, we see a six hundred thousand dollar underspend in the mosquito treatment programme. And even though, even though this LNP mayor talks a big game about supporting businesses, he does it, he slips that rhetoric in wherever he can, we know the numbers don't lie. There's been a two million dollar delay in projects in the Economic Development Programme. And this is the one that the last budget, the Lord Mayor went out crowing about, saying he had this big plan to support local businesses and to support the economic recoveries we emerged at that time from a particular COVID wave now, from Omicron. But we know in the papers before us that the Lord Mayor has underspent in that Economic Development Programme by two million dollars. So what are these papers before us show, Chair? They show a Lord Mayor that cuts, delays, oversees cost blowouts, mismanages, rots, promotes himself, fails to deliver on promises and neglects our suburbs. And this is this LNP Lord Mayor's legacy. So under, under Adrian Shrinna, Chair, residents are paying more and more in rates and getting less and less in return. Brisbane certainly deserves better.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item A. The annual operating progress plan and quarterly, quarterly report reflects council's financial results for the quarter ended December twenty-one in relation to council's budget and records variances in the delivery of the operations plan. As the Lord Mayor said, the report shows a strong and balanced budget position for the year until December, considering any changes that were, of course, made during the budget review process. In addition, the report gives an overview of the commercial operations and financial wellbeing of council's business activities. Now, as councillors know, any financial changes reported that are permanent and require a change in the budget are dealt with through the budget review. In terms of council's performance against key financial ratios and targets for the period, as the Lord Mayor said, all results are within the targets, highlighting our effective financial management. said, all results are within the targets highlighting our effective financial management. The report compares results in the year to date to those for the same period in the previous year. Now, news flash to councillor Cassidy through you Mr Chair. The apparent surge in rates last financial year, there was actually a rate freeze councillor Cassidy. A number of rebates and fee waivers were introduced which account for the variances that you'll see. This year, the Lord Mayor has announced further fee waivers which will be picked up in the report for next quarter. So perhaps you could play along next time. Just as the same as in many industries Mr Chair, supply chain impacts are being experienced across a range of areas in council. This includes labour, specifically trades, professionals and traffic controllers, commodities and goods such as steel and aluminium, timber and I T hardware and vehicles and equipment of course, including cars, trucks and specialist equipment. Turning to specifically Programme 8 in the City Governance Programme, the quarterly report shows movements in the budget as a result of increased revenues, rephasing and delays in some projects. Our fleet acquisition project continues to be impacted by global supply chain constraints. Anyone trying to buy a car can attest to this and it's absolutely no different for council. This means that fleet budgeted and ordered for this current financial year may not be delivered until next financial year. This has many flow-on impacts for council's fleet, delaying replacement increases in the life of the fleet and can impact servicing schedules and revenue of course from eventual disposal. There have been many projects though completed in the past quarter and I want to touch on one in Programme 8 being the Employee Emergency Broadcast Solution. An S M S alert solution has been established, providing a new way to communicate with employees at the time of a potential or actual incident, emergency or disaster. The S M S alert solution enables employees who opt in to be notified of incidents, emergencies and disasters, for example severe weather events or potential threats to personal or public health and safety. And I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly on item A. From all the, the puffery from the Lord Mayor earlier today, it's pretty clear you can see why he had to spend nearly 30 minutes talking about everybody else other than council business because there is only one issue on the E N C report before us today and that is a quarterly report which is a standard quarterly report of this council. This Lord Mayor is essentially failing to bring forward the issues that are needed to move things forward in this city. And his comments earlier today about the standard of mowing, I wrote it down because I'm definitely going to be putting that in my newsletter to people, about what a high quality mowing service is happening around the city, has to be one of the most ridiculous things I've ever heard. Not only is the grass knee-high or waist-high in local parks in my ward, we've got roadside areas that have not been mowed, roadside areas that have been mowed badly and it is now almost the end of February. So whilst it might have rained a bit in December and January, six weeks later, that's still not an excuse that washes. And I appreciate that Covid may be an issue. And I absolutely have been trying to get some information about this from councillor Marks who has refused for the past three weeks to answer the question in committee. I put the question on notice which is in there today and that question did ask from which wards have the additional mowing contractors been taken because that's what we were told had happened. Now, I understand, I understand that the answer to that question was no. But the problem we've got is the Lord Mayor's tin ear which is inherited from Graham Quirk clearly, because my question earlier today did not ask which ward, it asked which contracts. Now, there are mowing contracts for roadsides, there are mowing contracts for parks. Not all our mowing contracts are related to wards. So the Lord Mayor spent a good 10 minutes attacking me and claiming that he'd answered, that the question had been answered. He needs to go back and have a look at what I said because under the City of Brisbane Act, he's got an obligation to answer the question.
Point of order to you Deputy Mayor.
I'm sure councillor Johnson's loving debating the Lord Mayor but he's allowed to go around the world. She needs to speak about the annual report.
Yeah, yep.
Councillor Johnston to the report please.
And, and for anybody who wants to read the actual quarterly report, you can find for example on page 29, that this council has underspent $1.5 million on managing bushland and conservation reserves. Now, in the middle of one of the hottest, wettest, you know, seasons out there as the Lord Mayor's been telling us, who underspends on managing bushland and parkland reserves? Who underspends? This council does. Not by a little bit, but by 1.566 million. So I do thank the deputy mayor for joining us in the debate today and drawing attention to the fact that the on-the-ground impact of this administration's failure to deliver on the budgeted services that we discuss every June is the practical outcome that the grass is not being mown out in the suburbs or it's being mown poorly out in the suburbs. Now councillor Marks is not here today, but I have been asking now, fourth week, and councillor Toomey was there today, so I didn't ask it in committee, we've been told that some wards have got temporary additional services. My question is really clear and I don't know what you've got to hide unless someone lied to me three weeks ago, lied to councillor Griffiths. So what's the answer? How long are these temporary services being delivered out in Forest Lake, Maruka and Jamboree? And the Lord Mayor's off now. Now that someone else can actually clarify, he goes, he attacks and then he leaves, that's fine. So how long are these temporary services going to be going on? And from which other council contracts have these staff who are delivering the additional services in those three wards, where have they been drawn from? I want to know what parts of council the grass is being mown so well that they've got spare people that can be used in those three wards. Now, I know in speaking to the adjoining councillor to me, that even with the temporary new mowing people, that the grass is not being mown very well in Maruka Ward, waist-high grass in Annalee, clearly in the middle of the park in Annalee, knee-high grass in Yoronga, it's not, it's not going well. So when this administration underspends and fails to deliver on their budgeted items, it's not, it's not a reflection of their great economic management as the finance chairman would have you believe. It's a reflection of the fact that they cannot manage the basic services that the residents of Brisbane are paying for. So let's be clear that I don't think this administration is doing a good job. But you know, every quarter for the last 14 years, they've brought through, you know, these type of error-riddled homework. This is what you'd call it, right? Like if your kid brought home this kind of homework and said, oh, look, we were close enough there or we're a bit behind there, you'd be putting your foot down as parents. You'd be saying, well, that's not good enough. You need to spend more time doing this. You need to focus on that. And that is what is not happening here. This council is failing to deliver on the basic services that are needed to support our community and it is showing up in the everyday such as grass mowing and the maintenance of council parks and bushland.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you Chair and I rise to respond to councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnston.
To the report.
In debate. Firstly, to the mosquitoes. Well, yes councillor Cassidy's right, there was a $600,000 underspend. Why? Because we didn't require helicopters to spray. Why didn't we require helicopters to spray mozzies? Basically because the breeding cycle of the salt marsh was disrupted by the excessive amount of rain. That's basically it. So from what we've learnt today.
Councillor Strunk.
From what we've learnt today is that the saving that we've made here, I'm pretty happy that we don't actually own helicopters, that we don't actually have Brisbane City Council helicopters that are solely employed just to spray mozzies or pilots, sitting around doing nothing because the mozzies aren't breeding, because we're in a La Nina. The conditions aren't right for them to breed. And we've heard time and time again from the Lord Mayor and from councillor Marks that we do what is necessary to spray and keep the community safe from salt marsh mozzies. We spray when we are needed to. We take the guidance from the council entomologist. That is what we do. And if that comes through as a $600 saving, $600,000 saving at some stage, then that is what happens. We respond to what is happening in the environment. We take the advice of the entomologists. We don't go out and buy multimillion dollar helicopters and having them sit on the tarmac just to do nothing. We don't do that. We take a responsible financial action towards spraying with mozzies. And the Lord Mayor has said that time and time again. To councillor Johnston with regarding to the mowing, absolutely right. No mowing contractors have been taken away from other wards to service the gaps created by those contractors that had Covid. Definitely not. Didn't happen. What has council done? Council's reached out to the existing panel and asked them, do you have extra capacity within your company to facilitate mowing in other wards? And they've put their hands up. They said, yep. Well councillor Johnson, I'll take that in ejection. How long is a piece of string? How long does somebody have Covid? How long is somebody crook? How long is somebody sick? Why are you persecuting? Why, why are people being persecuted because they have Covid? Seriously, come on. Bit of common sense on that side of the chamber would be appreciated from time to time. But this is, this is the reality of it. No contract, no contractors have been taken away from other wards. We've used the existing panel and we've exercised the extra capacity that those companies have to do the work. And I think that is responsible management. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Toomey. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I think it's quite obvious today that those on the opposite side of the chamber just do not understand basic accounting principles.
Point of order Chair.
This quarterly financial report clearly explains that there are timing differences that occur from budget quarter to budget quarter. And when there is a budget for an entire year, it sometimes has an allocation or an expectation that it will be conducted in a certain quarter. And for various reasons, as my good colleague here councillor Toomey has just explained, there have been a lot of disruptions that have been Covid related. Now, every business person in this entire nation knows that there have been business disruptions due to Covid, whether it has been through a supply chain, whether it has been through labour, whether it has been through material availability. There have been significant impacts. And so from a quarterly financial report, the council officers are correctly aligning the relevant components of each project to the relevant budget quarter. Now, the reality will be is come the end of the financial year, the realignment of the budget process and the quarterly financials will be all aligned. So those on the other side of the chamber needn't worry their little heads because this is a situation where this is standard accounting practice. If they had the business experience on that side of the chamber, they would understand that there are relevant double A S Bs and double A Ss that govern accounting principles. And so if they actually understood what it meant from a business perspective, they might be in a more credible position, shall we say, to stand and argue the points in this chamber. I can say that the leader of the opposition's comments are completely inaccurate and I say to all of the council officers that are working behind the scenes on our projects, thank you for your efforts because over the last seven or eight months, it has been a challenge to deal with the uncertainty that has been Covid related. And they are getting on with the job of delivering these projects. And this side of the chamber is focused on supporting our offices to deliver the projects for the people of our good city. Thank you Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Owen. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, Mr Chair. I was going to get up and speak on this item, item A, but I've been listening to an incredible debate from the other side that denies reality. And the one figure that actually really stands out to me in this whole document is on page 16 and that is that this council has expended only 28.5% of the budget and we're halfway through the year. Now, all we've been listening to is excuses and why they have it, no solutions. Brisbane City Council rate payers and residents pay you to come up with solutions, not give them a bunch of excuses as to why you can't do something, why you can't progress this particular project over, over a particular period of time. They, they don't want to hear that, quite frankly, and I don't want to hear it either. I mean, yes, I, I understand some of the excuses but not, not, especially the mowing, that's just the most ridiculous. And the, and the mosquito spraying, I mean, salt marsh mosquitoes are in those areas of Brisbane, but the majority of area of Brisbane doesn't have salt marsh mosquitoes, right? We still need those sprays out at Forest Lake, out of American and all the other places that we've been clipping a lanina that has left water everywhere, right? And, and of course a breeding ground for mosquitoes. So please come up with some solutions. That's what you're paid for. That's why you're getting the big bucks Lord Mayor and the chairs. That's what you're paid for, to come up with solutions and quit giving excuses. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Further speakers? Lord Mayor, summing up.
Yes, thank you. It's quite clear that, once again, we see deliberate attempt to misrepresent the information that has been provided here because, and, and various councillors spoke and pointed out the reality of the situation. But reality is not of interest to the opposition. It's only perception and so we've seen a continuation of that strategy. What we see here, and if we zoom out and take a strategic view, is that we are the only level of government out of the three that has managed to keep a budget strong and balanced during what has been an incredibly challenging pandemic and economic situation. The only level of government. And so it hasn't been possible at the state level and it hasn't been possible at the federal level either. And when you hear Labour councillors talking about the financial statements that we see in front of us, you would think something very different had happened. But the reality is, this is an extraordinary effort by so many people to make sure that we respond to the challenges of the pandemic. And so there, there has been a lot of impacts on council. There has been a lot of impacts, there's no doubt. There's been a lot of impacts on everyone. But what we've done is done our absolute best to make sure we respond responsibly. We've provided support where it is needed. We've provided relief where it's needed. We've provided extra investment in targeted areas that we think will help. But one of the saddest things, I guess, about all of the comments that were made was councillor Cassidy's comment about how rates, the rates revenue had gone up significantly compared to the same time last year. But why is that? It's because last year was the first time in 35 years where rates went down. Rates went backwards. The first time in 35 years that rates went backwards. And so if you're comparing the first time in 35 years when rates went backwards to now, of course there's going to be a difference. But it was interesting, when rates went backwards, did councillor Cassidy actually acknowledge that rates went backwards? No. No, he didn't. He said it wasn't enough. It said, he said it wasn't enough. And so rates went down, the average rate bill, the average residential rate bill went down. It went down. Listen to, like the, like the ostriches buried their head in the sand here, not accepting the reality. And so of course, when you compare a year where rates went down to now, when the biggest challenge going forward is actually inflation and the cost of everything going up, of course there's going to be a difference. So we're seeing for the very first time a difference. So we're seeing, for the very first time around the world, in a long period of time, in decades, inflation is now one of the biggest challenges. We're seeing in the United States, massive inflation that we haven't seen in decades. We're seeing all range of impacts flowing on. And even here in Australia, we're seeing inflation being at levels that they haven't been seen at for a long, long period of time. And so, we've gone from a situation where the rate, the average rate bill went down in the previous year, and now we're seeing ongoing cost pressures on pretty much everything council does, all of the projects we build, as well as the desire to make sure our staff are remunerated properly, remunerated. And so, as part of this, we have, after a period of no salary increases, we have provided an increase for our staff. And that's flowed through as well. So the cost of everything, including staff costs and salaries, is going up. And that is a big challenge. But as we have always done, we will continue to responsibly manage this situation so that we can continue delivering for the people of Brisbane. Before I sit down, I did want to just comment on one other extraordinary thing. Councillor Johnston thinks that I don't listen to her, but I do listen. And one of the interesting things she said is that there was some kind of underspend in bushland maintenance and conservation reserve maintenance, and that was responsible for the grass being long. These are two separate budgets. They are not even linked. They are not even linked. Bushland areas and conservation reserves are natural areas. We don't spend a lot of money in bushland reserves cutting the grass because it's bushland. We spend money in parks cutting the grass, we spend money on the roadsides cutting the grass, but that is two separate things. And if after all of this time councillor Johnston is not aware of this, I would be quite surprised. Surely, surely she should know better that there's a difference between the bushland and conservation reserves management budget and the grass cutting budget. They are two separate budgets. But, once again, we see misinformation being used in this place to try and make a political point. And so, it is disappointing, but...
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
But the financial documents in front of us show one thing really clearly, responsible financial management under extremely challenging times. And we will continue to deliver that responsible financial management for the people of Brisbane.
Thank you. Councillor Johnston, point of misrepresentation.
Yes, thank you. The Lord Mayor claimed that I was spreading misinformation to make a point. In fact, I referred to page 29 of the quarterly review, which indicates that council has underspent $1.56 million on conservation and management and reserves, and that's directly from the budget. So it's a fact, not misinformation, as the Lord Mayor would claim.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on this motion, the E and C report from the 14th of February 2022. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Adams.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. It says it's 2:53, so it's seven minutes before the afternoon tea break. The clerks who organise a cup of tea for us get put under a lot of pressure if we go early. And I would ask that we delay and move on to the next item before we go to afternoon tea.
Thank you for your perspective, councillor Johnston. There's nothing in the meeting's local law that says exactly what time the adjournment can be moved. The adjournment for afternoon tea has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. The adjournment for afternoon tea is for 15 minutes when all doors have been locked. Thank you. Turn my mic on. Lord Mayor, Establishment Coordination Committee report of the 21st of February 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 21st of February 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 21th of February 2022, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a very straightforward item. It's seeking approval for councillor Wines to represent the city and the leadership of this council in the Expo 2020 in Dubai. Obviously, it's not 2020 anymore, but as we saw with the Tokyo Olympics, the expo that was planned for 2020 has been delayed and is now underway and is coming to an end until the end of March this year in Dubai. Now, I shouldn't need to explain to anyone on the importance of world expos. Brisbane is a city that knows more than any other city how important these events are. It was a literal game changer for our city. And it's something that brought the world to our city, the world to our doorstep, doorstep, sorry, not doorstop, and opened our eyes to possibilities from around the world. But really, what expos are all about is about showcasing the investment and tourism opportunities that each place has. Now, the Australian government and also the Queensland government have made a major investment in the Australian pavilion. They invested in showcasing our nation and our state to the rest of the world, and Expo is the opportunity to do that. And it is only appropriate that we join with the Queensland government and the Australian government in making sure our city is showcased to the world. Our city, which will, in 10 years' time, become an Olympic city and a Paralympic city. And so, we are joining the state government and state government representatives. We are joining Trade and Investment Queensland, and we are joining the Australian government in having a presence for this final stage of Expo 2020 in Dubai. So it is appropriate that we are represented there. This is about, as I mentioned, showcasing our city as a future Olympic city and positioning Brisbane to make sure we can take advantage of not only the investment opportunities from around the globe, but also the tourism opportunities as well in the lead up to the 2032 Games. Councillor Wines is a senior member of our team, a senior member of this council. And as not only a member of the civic cabinet, but a former chair of this council, it's appropriate that we send someone senior to this event. Now, I understand and I'm told that there will be a state government minister also going at the same time. I'm not sure which one it is at this stage. It may be the treasurer, it may be the deputy premier. We're waiting for confirmation on this, but this is about making sure we're all united at three levels of government in showcasing our city, our state and our region. Also, in councillor Wines' additional responsibility as infrastructure chair, I'm sure there is a few things to learn at Expo 2020, both in terms of the showcasing of the different countries and their pavilions and their opportunities, but also in the city of Dubai as well, which is really quite a remarkable place, that not too many years ago was just desert and has built and developed into one of the world's big tourism destinations. It has developed fascinating infrastructure and facilities and tourist attractions as well. And so, I think there is a lot for councillor Wines to contribute, but also a lot for councillor Wines to learn. I commend this report to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. The LMP administration here are at it again, desperate to try and look like they have a seat at the table. We saw that with the Olympics, with the 2032 Olympics and Paralympic Games. And now, we see this 11th hour bid to look relevant when it comes to this attendance at the Dubai Expo 2020, being held in 2022. So what we have is this LMP administration asking the ratepayers of Brisbane for $13,000 to send an LMP councillor, councillor Andrew Wines, to the World Expo in Dubai. And of course, you know, it's well and good for him to travel over there, of course, all on the ratepayers' dime. Unlike the Brisbane City Council, the state government has actually been invited to attend this expo. So I suspect what has happened here is that this Lord Mayor and his LMP administration weren't included by the federal government or the state government in their hosting of a pavilion at the expo and certainly weren't invited to attend. And they're now seeking to just sort of invite themselves. And had a bit of a scramble yesterday, especially in C. They sat down and said, who gets to have this fun trip? So we know Trade and Investment Queensland have that stall and be hosting three events there. But again, there's nothing here to suggest that Brisbane City Council's been invited, or that councillor Wines has been invited. I wonder if they drew names from a hat at E and C, or I wonder if it's a deal, wonder why, the, yeah, the chair of the Economic Development Committee, also so we're led to believe overseeing the delivery of the Olympics here in Brisbane, that chairperson is not going. The Lord Mayor's not going. So they had to sort of work out amongst themselves at E and C, who was going to get the junket, who was going to get the $13,000 junket. And maybe it was just his turn, Lord Mayor said he's been around a while, so perhaps it was just councillor Wines' turn to have the all expenses paid overseas junket. But I think what's clear is that he is clearly more interested in this kind of work than he is representing his local constituents. In his ward of Inogra and surrounding suburbs, of course, residents are still furious about their local council not listening to them. And despite thousands of thousands of local residents calling for their local council, who the Lord Mayor's just described as extremely senior member of his civic cabinet, he's a civic cabinet chair, former chair of council, can just about pull any strings, we hear these days, but still won't listen to local residents when it comes to the Inogra Creek Sports and Recreation Precinct plans.
To the report, please, councillor.
I'm not sure, actually, councillor Johnston. So while his own residents' chair battling to be heard, they will know that councillor Wines is jet setting off to Dubai on all expenses paid junket. You know, the Lord Mayor is certainly hamming it up quite a bit in terms of councillor Wines' role at this expo in learning how major cities do things. We know that the chair of the Infrastructure Committee and all the presentations he brings to committee and the projects that he talks about here are minor road projects, talking about traffic lights and road widenings and things like that. He's certainly not well-equipped in that role to represent the economic future of our city, particularly a city that will be hosting the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. So what we know, what we know, and I suspect the Lord Mayor was a bit embarrassed to say this in introducing this item today, is that there was certainly no invitation for this administration to send someone along, but they feel like they should be more important than they are. So we've heard that earlier today, where the Lord Mayor is talking about issues like daylight savings and federal issues and state issues. He's certainly trying to pump himself up, Chair, and this is just another example. But at the end of the day, he doesn't have to pay for it, the ratepayers of Brisbane do. They're being short-changed in the Inogra Ward by their current councillor, not listening to them, not representing them. And now they're being short-changed here by that same councillor, being sent to Dubai on all expenses paid junket, even though he wasn't invited to attend. And it's not clear, it's not clear what he's going to be doing there. It's not clear what benefit the city of Brisbane is going to have. And certainly, not clear that there is any coordination unless the Lord Mayor has picked up the phone and spoken to someone up in William Street, as he likes to say, and figured this out, because I don't think that's very clear either. So we're sending councillor Wines now on a wild goose chase to Dubai to try and seem relevant when he, quite frankly, isn't in this process.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A. And we can see again that this council's got all the big issues coming forward. This paper came through at, I think, lunchtime yesterday, essentially. So let me be clear. The item before us today is to fund a $12, nearly $13,000 junket, and it'll be over that by the time the incidentals are added on, for councillor Wines to go to Expo in Dubai. Now, we've heard the Lord Mayor's arguments before us today that councillor Wines is a senior member of his team, and he's been the chair of council. And the chair of council part's true, but if anybody tuned into a council meeting and thought that councillor Wines treated this meeting with any seriousness, they wouldn't believe it. Councillor Wines thinks that this whole process is a joke. He tries to make everything into a joke. And he is fundamentally not the right person to be representing Brisbane overseas to start with. But number two, more importantly, that this is a massive waste of council money. We don't need to be going to Expo in Dubai. This sort of linking everything together to make it look like it's going to be some benefit to the city, there's no benefit in councillor Andrew Wines going to Dubai for Expo. Councillor Wines won't be around when the Olympic Games are on in a decade. There'll be, and what this doesn't tell us is that there will be several other council officers who will be going to this. I'd like to know how much more money council's going to be spending. Is another 20 grand, 30 grand, 40 grand on offices to go to Dubai? Because that's approved in secret by E and C. We're not actually told how much the officers' costs of travel will be. But I suspect it'll be several people and it'll be quite high. Because didn't that all come out on the weekend? So I opposed the deputy mayor going to the Winter Olympics, and yet this council pushed it through, and then they were shamed by the federal government saying that they shouldn't go. But guess what? The CEO and the head of council's planning, off they went to the Winter Olympics in Beijing. And what, 20-odd grands worth of ratepayers' funds were spent on the CEO's junket to the Winter Olympics in Beijing. Now, does anybody think the CEO of council is going to be around in 2032? I certainly don't. Does anybody think that the autocratic Chinese government's Winter Olympics are going to have any relevancy whatsoever to what Brisbane does in a decade's time, other than the fact that our Summer Olympics are actually Brisbane's Winter Olympics? I mean, maybe that's actually why they went. So let's be clear. These are junkets. They are absolutely a waste of ratepayers' funds. There is absolutely no way this council should be authorising the travel for councillor Wines to go overseas. The 12 and a half plus whatever it is should absolutely be spent on mowing the grass or fixing the footpaths. And beyond that, councillor Wines has a budget of some $20,000 as the chairman of the Infrastructure Committee, a budget he got as the chairperson of council for several years as well, which presumably he just pockets, like the Lord Mayor does, because they've never ever accounted for how they spend that money. And really, he should be using the funds that he has for his chairman's role, not taking it out of ratepayers' funds that could otherwise be used for other purposes. So for all of those reasons, I don't support what's going on here. It is absolutely wrong. It is unnecessary. And it is going to be an embarrassment to this city if this is allowed to happen.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I rise to support this item. And I also rise to, praise be to the Lord, that there's some people on the other side of this chamber that are not in administration. Because beyond what we hear from the council for Tennyson, who absolutely does not know everything, even though she purports to do that every single week, council does not know everything when it comes to the specialties, the expertise and the education that is going to be seen at World Expo, and has been seen there over the last couple of months and will be for the coming weeks, particularly when the focus is with the Sports Expo, which is in conjunction with World Expo as well. The item we have before us today is for councillor Wines, a senior member of this team, who is a fantastic local councillor, who was a great chair of council and a great member of our team. I love the fact that they can't debate the report, they have to play the man, because that's what they do every single time. They have to play the man, not the report, which is absolutely appalling, but I expected absolutely nothing less. Queensland are a major partner with the Australian Pavilion, and they are hosting three VIPs in the first week of March there, one of them being Brisbane 2032. Now, the state government sent out... Now, the state government sent out letters inviting the local governments to join them in November, except for us, but we're not surprised. But I don't know at what point that councillor Cassidy does not get it through his head, through you, Mr. Chair, oh, he's not here, that's right, that Brisbane 2032 doesn't involve Brisbane City Council. It's like, oh, I don't know, he wants to call it the Queensland Olympics, but of course the IOC would say that would be politicising it, so maybe that wouldn't be allowed. But it is extremely important that the host, the host city of the 2032 Olympics and Paralympic Games are there to be represented at this and anywhere else we can gather the information and the intel that we need over the next 10 years. It is a fantastic opportunity for us to learn from other cities and countries and a number of fields, just as the CEO and Di Currie did over the last two weeks with the technical studies that every Olympics hold for Olympic cities once they are announced as Olympic cities. Every city goes, and every city, Olympic city, sent their offices by the US. Sent their offices to learn, to learn from those who have hosted the Olympics, to learn what worked well and, in closed-down sessions, what didn't go too well. Now councillor Wines will be attending this Brisbane 2032 event, which will be the showcase for the vision for our Olympics and Paralympic Games here in Brisbane in 2032. The Queensland government are also focusing on renewable energy and future cities, which will be a fantastic event as well, as the fastest-growing capital city in Australia. We have to learn about these things, and it's no accident that councillor Wines will be attending with Mr. Anthony Ryan, the CEO of Brisbane's Economic Development Agency, because we will be looking at the opportunities for global investments, for projects associated with the Olympics, for the way that we make the businesses in Brisbane do better, because then we will do better. It's about being in the spotlight, and I can assure you, the fact that the Palache Government won't say the B-word called Brisbane is exactly why we need to be there. We need to be there to position our global place in the world as the 2032 Olympic City. We will look at the investment opportunities for infrastructure, carbon positive games, and sustainable strategies, which, as a member of this team for 14 years, councillor Wines has been living and breathing with me in senior positions for that entire time as well. We will be looking at the capability in sporting facilities and opportunities for event pipelines. It's not just about 2032, it's about the PGA staying here, it's about the Rugby World Cup coming in '27, it's about the esports events, it's about what happens in 2037 and what happens in 2042. Those opposite, in opposition, are so focused on 10 days in July in 2032 because the narrow-mindedness means they can't see the big picture. And we are not going to miss this opportunity now or over the next 10 years to make sure that we take every opportunity to meet with delegates, meet with people from around the world who are now interested of where Brisbane is and what we offer as an Olympic city. And I wish councillor Wines the best, I wish I could be with you, but I look forward to hearing everything that you come back with, with Mr. Ryan, and the ways we can leverage that into the next coming years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on item A, and I must say, I'm pretty disappointed to see the LMP administration bringing this forward. I have a low opinion of a lot of what the administration does, but this stuff really takes the cake. What we're talking about here is spending $12,750 of ratepayer money, public funds, to send a councillor overseas on a one-week junket to Dubai. Now, I don't have anything personal against councillor Wines, he's a friendly enough dude, but this is not a good use of ratepayer money. Almost $13,000 for a one-week trip to Dubai to attend an Expo. Now, I'm on board with the idea that sometimes face-to-face networking is valuable, you go to a conference, you have some conversations in the hallways, you make new connections. I see the logic of that, but a $13,000 trip to Dubai is not good value for money. And I think it's disgusting and reprehensible that this council administration continues to fritter away public funds on stuff like this, while claiming that it doesn't have the money for the basics. We've got a council administration here who says, oh, we don't have the money to invest in creating affordable housing and addressing homelessness, and yet we can find the money to send councillors on overseas trips for stuff like this. This is a terrible look for the council administration, if nothing else. I mean, there's all sorts of other wasteful examples of spending that this council is responsible for, but I mean, how much does it even cost to travel to Dubai? I don't believe it costs anywhere near that much. It's what, 1,600, 1,800 bucks for a return flight? I assume business class, but I mean, what's wrong with couchsurfing, councillor Wines? Do you have any mates you can stay with? Do you really have to stay in a high-end hotel? Like, what does this money go in towards? I'd like some clear answers about how this public money is being spent. And to understand why these conversations can't happen over the phone, why can't you participate remotely? Well, like, we live in an era where people can communicate with each other across oceans without having to physically fly there. And the suggestion to me that there is no alternative for councillor Wines to participate in this Expo other than to fly there in person for a week is, I think, really reprehensible. But I'm also frustrated because councillor Wines has an important job to do here in this city. He's the Chair of Infrastructure, and on a regular basis I hear from frustrated residents who can't get a meeting with key decision-makers like councillor Wines. Heck, I want to have a meeting with you councillor Wines, through you, Chair, it'd be nice if we could sit down and chat about some of the road projects and some of the congestion issues in my area. And I've requested meetings in the past, and we've had some good chats in the hallway, but I never get to sit down with you for more than 20 minutes. And I think there are lots of residents in this city who would like to see their councillors and the chairs of their committees actually doing some work in this city rather than flying overseas on a glorified holiday. That's really what this amounts to, as far as I can see. There's only a few days of actual events, 28th of February, 1st, 2nd, 3rd of March. That's a solid week of your schedule where you're out of Brisbane just for a couple of days of networking. I could have this wrong, I'm happy to be corrected, but your salary at the moment as a Chair of the Infrastructure Committee is somewhere in the realm of...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Not appropriate to be putting into hands, Art, a personal person's salary.
Yeah, a Chair's salary is definitely public information on the public record.
Councillor Sri, can I bring you back to the actual report, please?
Thanks, Chair, this is definitely relevant because we're debating whether or not we should be spending $13,000 of ratepayer funding to send a councillor on an overseas trip. Councillor Wines's salary is at least $220,000 a year. On top of that, he has an allowances budget of around another $20,000 a year. If he really needs to fly over to Dubai for work, he can pay for it himself, he can claim it as an expense on his tax if he has to, but he has enough money to fund this trip himself. He doesn't need ratepayers paying for it.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Lord Mayor, something up?
Well, if you really want to see the really basal gutter politics perpetuated by all of those in opposition, look no further than today. This is the classic example of playing the man rather than the issue. And all they did is use this as an opportunity to personally attack councillor Wines, to personally attack councillor Wines, simply because he's doing his job, the job that I have asked him to do. Now, putting aside the sheer hypocrisy that it is okay for state government Labour ministers to literally travel the globe to meet with movie stars in LA, yet when councillor Wines is representing us at the World Expo on a work trip for work purposes, as I have asked him to do, all they can do is personal attacks, smear. Now, look, it is really one of those things, when you have nothing else to give, like this opposition does, then you go for things like salaries, entitlements, you go for travel. You know what? Like, really? I don't think there are too many people in Brisbane that do not understand the importance of making sure that we promote our city and that we get investment in our city. And yes, we might be able to do some of that via Zoom or remote meetings, but really, where it makes a difference is in person. It makes a difference in person. And it is entirely okay and acceptable for the state government to send massive delegations of people over there, and the federal government as well. There's been multiple federal ministers that have been to Expo in Dubai already. Yet somehow it is inappropriate for us to go over there and promote Brisbane, to promote Brisbane as a destination not only for the Olympics but also for investment and tourism, things that will make our city better, things that will make our city grow economically, things that will create jobs for our city and economic opportunities for our residents. Yet you've got this small-minded approach from the other side who literally goes straight to the gutter, straight to the gutter every time. They are the most predictable, sad opposition that we have ever seen, straight to the gutter. And even their mentor, Jim Sawley, went on overseas trips. And in fact, just before he retired, he literally went around the world. This is when...
Councillor Johnston?
This is when he had retirement in sight, he decided he'd take a world goodbye tour. And so, you know, they can stand up here and they can pretend to rail against this, but what they're doing is just playing gutter politics. Government leaders do need to travel, and I can tell you, we would not have gotten the Olympics if the Premier and I and the Sports Minister hadn't travelled in person to Tokyo. And I remember the whinging, harping, whining people who said, oh, you can just do it via Zoom, we're right. Well, no, I can tell you, it wouldn't have happened. It wouldn't have happened. And the final thing, which is really disappointing, and so I guess once again opens an insight into how these people think, is their constant attempt to try and downplay the fact that we are the host city of the Olympics. We, as a city, signed a contract. We, as a city, are the host city of the Olympics. Yet you see councillor Cassidy and his colleagues, time and time again, trying to play down the importance of Brisbane having the Olympics and the role of Brisbane City Council in the Olympics. It really is quite revealing about how these people operate. They would prefer to talk down this opportunity and score some political points than actually get the best outcome for our city. And I can tell you that if there was an opportunity to have a Labour representative on this trip, and if they're actually the type of people that would operate in a bipartisan way, I would be happy to consider that. I'd be happy, but we know that they can't help but play political games, and they're not up for any kind of bipartisan cooperation, they're just not, can't help themselves. So we are the Olympic City for 2032, the Olympic and Paralympic City. We, just like the state and federal governments, should be sending someone to the Expo to make sure that Brisbane takes advantage of these opportunities. And I just think people can see right through it, this idea that somehow it's okay for the state government to go and send a huge delegation, and the federal government to go, but now it's not okay for Brisbane City Council to be represented despite the fact that we're an Olympic city, is very telling. And I've heard some comments about the cost of travel. This is consistent with council's longstanding travel policy, but I'll tell you what has changed. Airfares, and anyone that's checked what it costs to go to previously popular destinations, airfares have risen significantly as a result of the pandemic. And so things that would previously be, like, I think councillor Sri quoted, oh, $1,600, things that would previously be lots cheaper are now more expensive because there are fewer flights and fewer seats. Now, that will change over time.
Point of order, Chair.
Genuine question whether the man knows what the rough cost of the flight component is?
No, no. The reality is, when you're doing travelling at a time when there are very few flights, far fewer than what would normally be the case, of course the price is going to be higher than you would like. But this view that somehow this trip will deny basic services, well, I'll give you an example. We spend and we invest $20 million on cutting the grass each year. Is councillor Wines' trip going to make sure that money is denied to basic services? No, it is not. But councillor Wines' trip will ensure that there's future investment and tourism opportunities for our city, and that is the long-term view. That is what true leaders do when they're looking about the future of the city rather than basal gutter politics. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We now put this motion to the vote, the ENC report from the 21st of February 2022. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Division's been called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells.
Just for the record, Qantas has a round trip to Dubai for $2,000 on the dates you guys are proposing.
Councillor Sri, please.
Where's the other $11,000 going?
Please, not coming back. Okay, all right, yep. Thank you, it's all councillors who are with us, here with us now. The division is on the ENC report of the 21st of February 2022. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Appears to be no abstentions.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and 6 against.
The motion is carried, thank you. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of February 2022 be adopted.
Thank you. It is being moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday 15th of February 2022 be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. First of all, the report for the weeks in the Brisbane Business Hub, which is still humming, particularly as we come back for feet on the street in the mall and people dropping in to say hello, it's absolutely fantastic. And we've got a full timetable of workshops and events coming up over the next week. So from the, oh, this one is from March, actually, it's been from 22nd of February now to the 1st of March. So we've had the What 2022 Means for Business today from CCIQ, Winning Government Businesses, How SMEs Can Open Government Revenue Streams. So that's a good one for a workshop to discuss the benefits of the profits of working with government as well. On the 22nd of March, we have, no, it's February, we've got the dates wrong here, Celebrating Marvelous Women is coming up. It's a launch of the Marvelous Women Cards, a deck of decision inspiration cards containing wisdom of 52 diverse and marvelous women. On the 23rd, which is tomorrow, we've got Scaling Up: Fully Activating Your Sales Channels. So that is being supported by Digital Solutions, where they examine often easier access to new customers and clients via channel partnerships. On the 1st of March next week, Data Storytelling, I think I mentioned this last week, about how data storytelling skills and thinking about the ways that data can inform your decision-making in your business, with Dr. Selena Fisk. And also on that date, The Ultimate Business Strategy is to Empower You for Success in 2022. So that's Sales to Success. That's one of my local businesses down the south side. I was speaking to Sharon from there at the chamber the other morning, she's very excited to share with the Business Hub members how to create strategies... Hub members how to create strategies to empower success for 2022. So there's plenty going on there, please encourage your residents, your businesses to get involved in the Business Hub. We've also extended for one week the Grants Programme for the social enterprise. So if you know there's a social enterprise in your local area that hasn't or is not aware of the programme being put on offer at the moment, please direct them to the Brisbane City Council website so we can get them into that, that opportunity of the programming and mentoring those doing social enterprise businesses. Last week in the committee, we received a presentation from Chief Legal Counsel on an overview of the operations of the Olympic Legislation, or the Brisbane and Paralympic Games Arrangements Act, which is being used to actually establish the Brisbane OCOG, as it is known. It's the executive body that will be responsible for planning and delivery of the Games over the next decade, including all the facilitation, the, the works that need to be done right across the city and South East Queensland, actually. They will be an independent statutory body with a board of directors overseeing its effective and efficient operation. The majority of possessions have already been nominated and filled, but unfortunately, as we near the deadline to finalise OCOG, which is next Monday, the momentum has stalled because the Palache government seems to hold off and simply refuse to name her picks for the organising committee. So we'll wait and see if we're going to be asking for an extension or not, seems to be something going very slow up there at the moment on all fronts. But we put our nominations in without the delay, the Prime Minister's nominations were in before Christmas. The Premier is dragging her feet and we're waiting to see who else is appointed through the recruitment selection process before she takes her pick. So the first OCOG meeting was due to be held next week, but clearly without any action from the Premier, this will probably need to be pushed back. Just another example of the Palache government's disregard for anyone else but themselves, but we're used to this on a daily basis. It's just disappointing now with such an opportunity, we're not getting on with the business of getting it started. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? We now move the report, the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee report, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. Councillor Owen, the Transport Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 15th of February 2022 be adopted.
It's being moved by councillor Owen and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday 15th of February 2022 be adopted. Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the last week's committee meeting was a, about an update in regards to the various construction works that are underway right across our city as part of the wonderful Brisbane Metro project. There is just so much happening to deliver Brisbane Metro, and I'm glad to have the chance, not only to update in the committee, but also here tonight in the chamber, on all of the exciting progress coming up in the next few months and the work that has been undertaken. So last year, we reached a number of significant milestones for the project, including starting the Adelaide Street Tunnel, beginning construction of the depot, and also working on the charging infrastructure. So as a result, we saw more and more metro construction sites appearing right across the city as we began the delivery phase of the project. And I know how hard all of the council officers are working, they are just absolutely enjoying the fact that they are working on this major project in our city, and this will be their legacy as well as our city's legacy. And I think that they are very proud of the work that they are contributing to see this construction start and also proceed through the processes. But, Mr. Chair, we're only just getting started. But wait, there's more, as they say. This year, we will see lots of progress on the infrastructure that will support the all-electric metro fleet. Last September, we commenced work on the major infrastructure in the CBD, and that was primarily the construction of the Adelaide Street Tunnel. Now, the tunnel is certainly progressing, it's going very well, and 50% of the piling is now complete. So when we're looking at it from the surface level, on the street level, we're not really seeing too much, but underground, there is a lot of work going on. As part of the piling works, several interesting heritage discoveries have been made at the construction site, and I know that the Lord Mayor has been very interested in these finds, and certainly, when I recall being deputy to the Lord Mayor on the city hall renovations, we found many interesting things then, so it certainly is something that piqued my interest. And underneath the surface, we've identified the walls of a convict-era hospital building, which dates back to the mid-1800s, a lands office building dating back to the 1880s, and many other historical artefacts. And some of those include ink bottles which have the insignia of the Royal Assent on them. So it's all been a very interesting process and one which has a very special archaeological management plan in place so that we are making sure that we have the proper photographic recording and documentation of all of these finds. Now, these historical finds help to tell the story of Brisbane's history, not only as a penal colony, but also as it developed, and we will work towards making the interesting items available for public viewing and interpretation down the track. Piling will also continue over the next few months before the focus moves on to tunnelling the 225 metres for the busway underneath Adelaide Street. Now, near the site at Adelaide Street, works are also underway to prepare North Key, where a new river-viewing deck will also be installed, so that will be a great bonus for many people when they come to our city in the future. Further down Adelaide Street, the tunnel will actually meet the existing King George Square bus station, providing much-needed relief to the Victoria Bridge and the Queen Street busway. Main construction is also underway at the state-of-the-art Metro Depot located at Rochedale. The site will be the home for our fleet of super-contemporary metro vehicles, where they'll be restored, recharged and maintained. We've also started on earthworks at the Rochedale site, moving more than 100,000 cubic metres of material in order to prepare this 10 hectare site. So just when we're talking about 100,000 cubic metres of material, so that's the spoil that comes out of the earth, that equates to about the size of 40 Olympic swimming pools, so it's quite a sizable amount. So our depot will be one of the largest and most technologically advanced facilities of its kind in Australia, with a five-star green rating as well as the capacity to house over 100 metro vehicles on-site, but also to charge them in under six minutes. The depot will certainly connect to the South East Busway, providing easy access to the busway at the start and end of every trip. In addition to the depot, there will also be charging facilities at four key locations across the network. So works have been underway at Countess Street since last year, and in the next few months, works will commence on the facility at Ernie's Roundabout along the busway at Hurston. And for those of you who don't know about Ernie, Ernie was one of the original Brisbaneites who held the Stop Go signs at that particular roundabout. He's reflected on quite familiarity with, with the old Brisbane album, which does a lot of historical research into, into Brisbane. So residents will also start to notice progress on various station upgrades, beginning with the Buendia Busway Station.
Councillors, please, on my left, conversations, masks on, or conversations outside, please. Sorry, councillor Owen, please study.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I know that the metro project is a wonderful one for our city, and it is well and truly on its way to free up the bus network and to make travel through the city and out to the suburbs better than ever before. We thank the residents for their patience while we go through the construction phase of these important works, which are a crucial part of the Shrena Council's commitment to deliver better public transport for our city and also help to get our residents home sooner and safer. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Owen. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair, I rise to speak on this committee presentation on the Bendy Bus Project, and no surprises, of course, it's delayed. From its inception, the Brisbane Metro has been one of this LMP administration's most poorly planned projects, and that's certainly saying something. It was written on the back of a napkin as an election promise, and it's a promise they have not kept. The LMP told Brisbane residents, and the words came directly out of this Lord Mayor's mouth, that the Brisbane Metro would rival the Paris Metro and the London Underground. But this project has gone from a so-called metro to a short busway extension with a small fleet of overseas-made electric bendy buses. That's the sum total of this project. And despite the significant downgrade, Chair, the LMP still managed to rack up an eye-watering cost blowout of $300 million before any of that early works that councillor Owen has just talked about even started. And so to try and fool residents, this LMP mayor specifically ordered buses from overseas that looked like trains or trams, so he could continue to say to the residents of Brisbane that he was building a metro and that somehow the 60 overseas-made electric buses that look a bit like trams will live up to its fake name. The LMP, LMP mayor even resorted to calling the buses occasionally Trackless Trams, which really is an insult to the intelligence of Brisbane residents, who will soon see they are just, in fact, overseas-made bendy buses. And what makes matters worse is he snubbed Brisbane bus builders and got these buses made in Europe, not supporting workers here, not supporting economic recovery here or jobs here, but over in Europe. The deputy chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Owen, last week was very excited by the fact that this pilot bus for the project was at the time on a ship passing the coast of France. The LMP find it very exciting that they ended a 30-year partnership with local Brisbane bus builders and ordered every single one of these buses from overseas. Once the pilot bus gets here, it has to, of course, undergo fire safety testing to see if it meets Australian standards, costing ratepayers another $300,000, and we don't even know if it'll meet Australian standards, it'll be able to be driven on Australian roads at all. So what this project is and represents, cost blowouts, delays, lying to residents, snubbing local jobs, and this is this LMP Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrenner's Metro Legacy, Chair.
Thank you, further speakers? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair, well, I rise to speak on this item as well, and I really like the metro, I think it's a pretty good project. I think the way it's been delivered has some concerns, and obviously I don't support the approach of privatisation and then outsourcing to multiple contractors and subcontractors and sub-subcontractors until council doesn't really know what's going on with specific components of the project, but overall, I do think the project is a positive one for the city. I, I do have some minor concerns about how some of the particular infrastructure elements are being installed, and in particular, I've repeatedly raised concerns about what's happening in Dutton Park. And again, for those who aren't familiar, the problem here is that the council needed somewhere to put some charging infrastructure for the metro to service the UQ stop, and effectively the cheapest and easiest place to do it was in a public park. So this is a consistent pattern we see with the LMP administration, where they are quite happy to take away space from public parkland in order to put, create room for other projects and other forms of infrastructure. And I'm not dogmatic about this thing, I'm, I'm willing to see that there are, sometimes that is the best thing to do, and sometimes that there isn't a viable alternative, but if that's the case, they really need to be offsetting that loss of parkland through the creation of new public green space. I'm very critical of tree offsets, I don't think you can cut down a mature tree and simply offset it by planting more trees elsewhere, that still is a loss in terms of ecosystem value. But if there's, if there's an open, empty, grassy field and it has to be used for a piece of infrastructure, creating another similar open, grassy field nearby is an okay, or at least partial compensation. In this case, unfortunately, they're not just putting it in an open lawn, they're actually taking away mature trees. And that being the case, I think it is very important that the council offsets that loss of green space in a way that improves amenity for the local community. I was pleased that councillor Murphy and councillor Owen and their teams have tried to look at opportunities and options, and it does seem like we might be able to convert an area of car park at the bottom of the Dutton Park slope into green space, and if that happens, that will be a really positive outcome. That'll be the sort of thing that I will, I will be able to say to my residents, look on this one, the council administration listened to us, they worked constructively, they didn't have to do this, but they made an effort to, and I'll, I'll give credit where it's due if that does happen. I was a little bit concerned in the last committee because there was still some doubt as to whether that would happen, and I, I hope in the near future, or perhaps in councillor Owen's concluding remarks, you'll be able to give me a little bit more confidence that that is actually what will happen, because quite frankly, there's a lot of vacant bitumen down there at the bottom of the park that we don't really need as bitumen, but would be really valuable as green space. If any councillors don't know the area too well, it's an interesting spot because Dutton Park is one of the largest parks in inner Brisbane, and it's on the river, but there's actually nowhere to have a picnic down by the river, because the TJ Doyle Memorial Drive Road runs along that river's edge, and then there's a big car park, so there's not really anywhere to hang out down that end, and people do tend to picnic or go to the playground further up the hill. So if we can create some usable picnic space, ideally with some barbecues and picnic tables, but at least a bit more, a few more shady trees, that'll be a really positive improvement for the park, and, and I think will become a bit of a destination and a landmark down the track. So I, yeah, I, I do hope that, I'm, I'm not sure whether it's going to be, end up being councillor Owen or councillor Murphy, but I do hope that the metro team is able to deliver something positive there. I want to reiterate and put on the radar of councillor Davies as well, in case it's not yet across her desk, that for that southern end of Dutton Park to work as a public space and is a usable place for picnics, et cetera, it needs a public toilet, and happily, there already is a public toilet facility down at that end of the park, but it's integrated into the old, what was called the Murray Watch Men's Shed for a while, it's an old community facility, and council's Community Facilities Team are currently negotiating as to which community group will take on that facility, I don't know if councillor Howard will know much about this, but it's, it's being negotiated. But there's, as part of that building, there is a toilet block or the toilet cubicles that are separate from the rest of the community facility, and rather than council having those toilets exclusively for the use of the community facility, they can and should be used as public toilets, that's how they were designed, and that's how they used to be utilised five to 10 years ago. So councillor Owen and the Brisbane Metro team will be looking and working with news on how to create a public space down there that's positive and usable and, and good value for money, and hopefully the news officers will be talking to the transport officers about making sure that that public toilet is opened up at the same time, because if we can get that, the, the infrastructure's already there, the public toilet is DDA compliant, it's just not currently on the schedule or the rotation for regular works. So it, this is one of the real opportunities the Brisbane Metro project presents, is that we can actually get some improvements to public space and to public parkland at the same time. And I, I really do hope that councillor Owen and councillor Davies will be talking about that to one another and to their relevant offices, because that'll be something to celebrate and something where I can go to my residents and say, yeah, look, we're having years of disruption, road closures, noise, dust, all sorts of hassles with the metro project, but at least they're converting a few bays of car parking into green space. It's a, it's not, not quite a sufficient compensation for all the hassle that residents are dealing with locally, but it is something. More generally, I did want to, again, reiterate the importance, and, and I, I do acknowledge that the metro team has been trying at times, but just highlight the importance of making sure that local residents do get a heads up about some of these works, there's, the council, council does try, but there have been, I think, a few moments over the last little while, and there may be more in the future, where stuff just starts happening, and maybe the, maybe the homeowners get a letter, but the tenants don't, or maybe a letter is sent to the, the landlord of a commercial property, but the landlord doesn't pass that on to the tenant businesses in the property. So it, I think the metro team is trying their best with comms, but it's just good to be alert to that stuff, that just because we send a letter to the property owner doesn't mean that the small business that actually operates there regularly hears about that, it doesn't necessarily mean that the workers and the floor managers get that heads up, and then suddenly there's jackhammering outside their shop. So we, we'll, I, I hope and I trust that the administration will, will do its best with future stages of the, the metro in that respect. I'm also particularly mindful in terms of that Adelaide Street Tunnel opening, that we are still waiting to hear back on what kind of crossing facility we'll have at- we are still waiting to hear back on what kind of crossing facility we'll have at North Key. And again, I was concerned when the original concept designs didn't show a pedestrian priority crossing there, that was an oversight, and I think the Metro team now realise how busy that crossing is in terms of active transport. We do get a lot of people on bikes and pedestrians crossing there. So it'll be important to have a crossing at that point, and I don't think it should be, it's not going to work as a refuge island, it's a one-way lane anyway. It'll really need to be a zebra crossing or some kind of pedestrian priority crossing where the cars have to stop and wait for the pedestrians and bikes. That's really what we need there. So hopefully that'll be happening, and hopefully we'll get answers on that one sometime soon. Finally, I just wanted to reiterate in terms of the main station designs, the importance of public space and conceptualising these projects as public space improvement opportunities in their own right. Metro is not just a transport project, it's a transformative project in terms of how the stations interact with the spaces around them and how the stations can connect people into the public realm. And in that sense, places like the Cultural Centre bus station will be really important to get right. I've been a little bit disappointed that there hasn't been enough detailed and nuanced consultation with stakeholders like myself as to how the station will be designed. There's kind of some general designs that get circulated and a general opportunity for feedback, but it's not at the level of fine-grained detail that I think public spaces like this deserve. I know a lot of councillors in this place, when you've got a local park upgrade happening, you look at all the details and you want to know, 'Where are the benches going and will there be a street light here?', and 'How wide will this footpath be?', because you want to make sure that those little details are right for all the people who end up using the public space. We should be taking that same approach to a project like the Metro. Even though it's a much bigger project, how those specific public spaces within the Metro are designed and developed is really important, and I think residents are right to expect that they do have a bit more influence in, say, in the specific design and configuration of some of those spaces, particularly around the Cultural Centre bus station, because it's such a busy area, there's so much foot traffic, there's so many bikes and scooters and pedestrians moving through there. I think it would be a shame if the administration didn't do enough detailed consultation about exactly how those stations will be laid out, and as a result, we miss opportunities to improve the public realm. And finally, just want to re-emphasise the importance of creating a new public park at that corner of Gray Street and Melbourne Street. That shouldn't drop off the radar, we need that park now, and it should be delivered as part of the Metro.
Councillor Sri, your time has expired. Any further speakers? Councillor Owen, summing up.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Sri for his constructive feedback and comments this afternoon. And can I say councillor Sri, I know that the officers have been working diligently on looking at the points that you have raised. In fact, they are investigating your concerns in regards to the toilets, the Adelaide Street crossing, and I know that they have been undertaking extensive investigations and having conversations with the officers from News Branch, particularly to ensure that the location in Dutton Park Recreation Reserve has minimal impacts on the community, the environment, and also on the public green space. It just has to be put on the record though that the reason that that Dutton Park Reserve had to be incorporated into this is because it is related to flood immunity, and we can't have the electrical charging infrastructure in a position where it is susceptible to flooding. So hence it couldn't go over at the UQ side, and we had to also put it close to the electrical capabilities for charging it through the grid over at Dutton Park. So I know that the officers have been regularly trying to keep you updated with briefing you on the different aspects of it, and I do appreciate the fact that you're raising the concerns about the communications, and particularly, I do encourage you councillor Sri, that when there is a newsletter coming out about Metro, to feel free to share it amongst your Facebook followers etc, because I think the more mediums that we can share this particular proper newsletter, the proper communications in a responsible way so that people are informed, is a great avenue for local councillors to work with the project teams, and that is certainly a benefit for all of our city going forward. The comments by the leader of the opposition, they truly, truly are quite insulting towards the many, many Brisbane-based businesses who are working on this project, the many local workers who are employed through the many aspects of the Metro project. But then, all we hear from the other side is hyperbole and quite a lot of fake news, because they don't really like to understand what is going on with these projects. They like to make these comments, they twist it to a different realm. And I can say, I've never seen anything about the Metro on a napkin, so that must be a completely convicted component of somebody's imagination, but it certainly, it certainly isn't fact. And so that is where, anything that comes out of the mouth of those on the opposition side of the chamber, you can't rely on the premise of what they are saying. They twist the truth and think that by saying something, it's going to create a parallel universe in which their imagination runs riot. Well, I can say that this Metro project is proudly employing people in Brisbane. There are workers outside City Hall underneath Adelaide Street who are Brisbane workers, Brisbane companies, they're working on this Brisbane Metro project right across our city. So to say that workers are being denied an opportunity here in Brisbane is false. To say that we are not focused on economic recovery, the best way to benefit a city for economic recovery is through infrastructure projects. And we saw that certainly through the GSC, and now we are seeing it again through Covid. So I say to all of the council officers, all of the contractors, and all of the subcontractors, and all of our business partners, thank you for being part of Brisbane's Metro project. We appreciate the work that you have been putting in, we appreciate the collaborative approach that you have engaged in this project with us, and we certainly look forward to sharing this project with the residents of the city of Brisbane once it's completed. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Now move to the vote on this motion, the Transport Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report. The Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 15th of February 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday 15th of February 2022 be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Just before I move on to the report, I just wanted to make some further comments from today's answer. So councillors will recall, the question was about shortcomings of the state government's support infrastructure for health facilities. It's been brought to my attention in the intervening time that the Minister for Health has been quoted saying, 'Now is the right time to invest in additional infrastructure to make sure the residents in these areas continue to get quality healthcare.' Can I ask the minister to please meaningfully consider infrastructure that would make access for the people who work at hospitals a priority as well? That they are people who work in these facilities each and every day, they're committed to the healthcare of their patients, wherever they come from. And I just ask that, considering that the minister is deliberately delaying a project that would have, that had it occurred two years ago, a lady would still be alive today. And I just want the minister to keep that at the front of her mind while she, in my view, is deliberately holding back a vital piece of work that will materially improve the lives of the people who work at the Prince Charles Hospital. The report today in front of us spoke to the Chelsea Rickett and the Chelsea Rickett Road intersection of Wakely Bike Way. I had the pleasure of attending the recent traffic light signal turning on in the company of the Lord Mayor and Mr Ross Faster. Can I also take this opportunity to thank the federal government for their contribution? It was a $6 million contribution out of a $9.5 million project. Now, the length of the project is from the intersection of, excuse me, the boundary of the city, Redlands, all the way into, I believe, Green Camp Road. And it's a upgrade to four lanes, and it will make the operation of the road much better for those travelling through it, but also much safer for the many people who will travel around that intersection. So notably, the Chelsea Road is a neighbourhood road which carries a lot of people to New Cleveland Road. So that's a vital piece of road for the eastern suburbs. The upgrading from four lanes up to four lanes, it also allowed two turning pockets into the additional roads. Can I also bring up the Wakely Bike Way project, which was 2.5 metre wide, shared pedestrian and cycle path from the intersection of Chelsea Road and Rickett Road, connecting to the existing path network on Green Camp Road. It also provides an important missing link to the entire Morden Bay recreational cycling network, is now shared through the Loater Watercourse area. A personal interest of mine is to ensure that our projects are as sustainable and renewable as possible, and this project was no different. There was 500 tonnes of asphalt removed from the existing road and reused to construct new road shoulders. Around 300 cubic metres of old road pavement was excavated, allowing for new service trenches, and reused to construct new embankments as part of the road upgrade. The new bridge across Loater Creek utilised existing piers from the 1960s to support the new shared path, allowing the new bridge to be installed without excavation or other construction works in the creek, minimising environmental disturbance in that sensitive area. It is an important piece of road, one that connects Brisbane City to Redlands, one that has more than 27,000 vehicles a day travel upon it. It is an excellent piece of work. I commend the officers and I thank the federal government for their necessary support, and I trust that all users of the eastern suburbs will be able to travel around that area more safely and more efficiently than they had in the past. There are two petitions under consideration. The first one is regarding a pedestrian crossing signalisation at Orange Grove Road and Lilian Avenue Salisbury, or shall I say, Orange Grove Road near Lilian Avenue Salisbury. The response in summary is that the council recognises the concern, it is considering how to properly solve this concern by local residents. However, the funding is not available at this immediate time, however, it is being considered into the future. On the other matter, the prevention of long-term anchoring in the Brisbane River, after consideration, that was brought to me because the councillors' reference would be 11 separate councillors that would have to be consulted with, and in those circumstances, it gets brought to the Chair of the Committee. I have determined that there will be no change to the existing arrangements, and will continue to allow mooring in specific parts of the river. I look forward to any contributions.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item B, which is a petition pertaining to my ward, and it is actually, and I'll ask that it be taken seriatum for voting.
Sure.
Thank you. This petition was signed by 255 residents, and that petition started again, it has been a petition that's come before this council before, after there was an accident at this particular pedestrian crossing. As well as those 255 residents who signed this petition, the Queensland Police have also written to myself, I've written to the Lord Mayor and the CEO, raising their concern about this intersection as well. Basically, the site is a very difficult site, it has been increasing in difficulty because the traffic flow through, along Orange Grove Road has been increasing. But the location of this crossing is across four lanes of traffic, which is very unusual. My understanding is, from advice from officers, is that there's actually only four other locations in Brisbane like this, council where it can remove them or signalises these sort of crossings. So this crossing is also located on Busy Road, and it's at a T-intersection, which further adds more difficulty to the site, and it's also just located below the crest of a hill. The difficulty with the site is that we have looked at alternatives in terms of closing this off, and the officers are recommending, because it is a frequently used crossover by a number of residents crossing from one section of Salisbury to another, to actually get to the three local schools, in particular Salisbury State School, St Pius, and Southside Christian College, as well as to catch the buses, that this crossing remain. So my point is that this should be a priority for the administration, that we should be signalising it, as has been recommended by the officers, and we shouldn't be kicking it further down the field and saying, 'Well, we'll look at some future funding arrangement.' I have repeatedly asked for this crossing in my budget submissions, and I believe that is a common sense area that we need to be spending money in for the safety of residents who are using it, safety of public transport people who are using it, and also for students who are using it. I believe the current response does not actually deal with the seriousness of this, and I would call on the administration to really get their act into gear and to fund the signalisation of this crossing. Can I add that the final point I want to make is that they're, in their own pedestrian review, when they did a pedestrian review of the city, this crossing, along with three others, was picked up as a priority project that this administration would like to do. Now, I would support them in doing that, and hope that the Lord Mayor is listening now so that it is considered in the budget, I'll also be including in my budget submission. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Wines, summing up? Okay, thank you, councillors. We now move to a vote on items A and C in the Infrastructure Committee report, items A and C. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Item B, item B was in seriatum. All in favour of item B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Division called by councillor Griffiths and councillor Cook. Councillors, the division is on item B in the Infrastructure Committee report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands. Thank you. Those opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Are there any abstentions? No. No.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 17 in favour and six against.
Clear. Item B, the Infrastructure Committee report carried. councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of February 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday 15th of February 2022 be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In last week's committee meeting, we had a presentation on the Planning Information Office. And the Planning Information Office was established in 2008 and consists of up to seven town planners. The PIO is responsible for providing free telephone advice on general town planning information to the wider community, and it operates from 9 till 4pm, Monday to Friday. And some of the request types that it fulfils include inquiries about subdivisions, general inquiries about houses, demolition and removal, approved developments. Obviously, in this particular year or two where we've seen a lot of renovations, they handle inquiries related to home extensions and renovations. So quite a lengthy list of inquiries that the PIO can assist with. In addition to those types of inquiries, the PIO also manages green space advice requests, written advice requests, historic file requests and liquor licence applications. And in 2021, the PIO completed 27,734 phone calls and callback requests. So a very busy unit of council and certainly providing a very good service to the community. The PIO have identified a range of opportunities where they can improve service, and this includes continuous improvement of the service, enhanced efficiency and enhanced quality of information that they're providing, providing better access for customers through the self-service opportunities through our website. They're looking to reduce call waiting times and talk times, and also trying to support the investment in Brisbane in general. Obviously, if we've got people from interstate or other jurisdictions looking to do something in Brisbane related to housing, this particular unit can help them. There are a range of objectives or outcomes they're seeking, and that is obviously things such as increasing the number of calls they can handle, improving the experience that residents get when calling the hotline, and reducing waiting time. So they are very dynamic in terms of trying to improve their service to the community, and they have identified a couple of areas where they think they can do that. In the context of their responsiveness, they have a pretty high standards they're trying to meet, and on average, the wait time for a caller is less than three minutes. The PIO also facilitates helping to step residents through the website. There's a terrific amount of information available on council's website, and they sort of assist in that guidance as well. They also have the capacity to support 160 different languages. Obviously, Brisbane's a multicultural city, and we have a wide range of people who don't have English as their first language, and we have the capacity to obviously support those non-native English speakers. So a really valuable service. It's one that's obviously getting a lot of support from the community. We would expect similar volumes in 2022. The interest of Brisbane residents in town planning related matters, and certainly a lot of the interest in residential renovation and extension remains high, and we would expect to see continued volume through that areas. And I would just give a shout out to that particular group. They do a terrific job, so thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers. We now move to the vote on this report, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Davis, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday 15th of February 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday 15th of February 2022 be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Last Tuesday, we had a presentation on the Creek Neighbours Programme, which we're going online this year. The Creek Neighbours Programme is a free educational programme that aims to foster early connection to waterways, and through education, encourage children to become the environmental stewards of the future. Since the programme launched in 2020, we've worked with 10 kindergartens and 1,166 children and their families, and delivered 212 lessons. One of the criteria for kindergartens participating in the face-to-face programme is that they need to be within walking distance to a creek. So that we can allow more kindergartens to participate in this programme, especially those not near a creek, council is piloting the Creek Neighbours Programme online. The online programme will follow the same four-part programme with videos, games and activities linked to the curriculum outcomes. Additional resources are also provided to support teachers to deliver the programme, as well as providing a virtual underwater experience if students don't have access to a creek or are unable to get to one in person. Kindies are provided with materials including a dip netting kit, creek game kit, and Gracie the tree frog toy. Gracie the Frog has been a big feature for the kids as part of the programme, with kids learning what Gracie needs to survive, including what her creek needs to be healthy in order to survive. Each child gets to take home Gracie for the weekend so they can teach their family how to take care of her. And as part of the pilot, three kindies will be trialling the online programme, and will provide feedback to council before it's opened up to all kindies across Brisbane so we can fine-tune it. Items B and C are petitions, Mr Chair. The first petition requests council rename Satellite Street Park Cooperoo to Barbara Bryce Park, and petition requesting council rename Gager Street Park Sunny Bank to Richard Dick Martin Place Park. All three petitions will now be considered by council in accordance with the naming parks facilities and tracks procedure. I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak just very briefly on item B. Satellite Street Park Cooperoo, also affectionately known as Green Park, is located on the corner of Satellite, Presion and Crucius Streets. Some time ago, Mr John Wallace approached me with his idea to rename this park to acknowledge long-time local resident Barbara Bryce. True to his word, Mr Wallace collected signatures of support for his idea from the many residents who visit this popular spot. Barbara Bryce was born in 1919 and passed away just shy of her 101st birthday in January 2020. Her and her husband Ivor lived in Satellite Street at Cooperoo. Their house was only one of two in the area in the very early days, and it was surrounded by bushland and accessed only by dirt roads. Barbara lived in the same house for 77 years, and her family remains local to the area. She was an active member of the CWA and was well-liked and respected by the local community, and she loved Cooperoo. Many thanks to Mr Wallace for his efforts in recognising Mrs Bryce in this way. From now on, instead of Satellite Street or Green Park, our community will know this playground and open space as Barbara's Park. Thank you.
Fantastic. Any further debate? councillor Davis, summing up? Thank you. We now move the report, the motion for the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Toomey, the City Standards Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the City Standards meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of February 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Toomey and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday 15th of February 2022 be adopted. councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. Just before I get into the report of last week's committee meeting, I just wanted to address and put on the record a couple of questions that the councillor for Tennyson asked in the committee meeting. The first question was, can machinery cut, referring to lawnmowers, at different heights? The response to that question was, yes, they can. They can cut between 30mm and 200mm in height at increments of 10mm. Councillor Johnson also wanted to know that under the contract, was there any specific heights that are dictated? And in response to that, yes, there is a recommendation that high-profile parks are cut at 30mm. All other parks or general parks are cut at 40mm. However, contractors have a discretion to adjust the height pending on the contour of the ground, so therefore, so they don't damage their own equipment. So that's the answers to those two questions. Mr Chairman, in committee last week, we had probably one of the most fascinating committee reports that I have ever sat in on. Since I've been councillor, we've basically done a ward in my bridge, sorry, a bridge in my ward, I'll get that right.
(laughing).
A bridge in my ward almost every year. Now, whether that's a pedestrian bridge or a culvert crossing, it's some kind of connection. And generally, it's been with the Inogre Ward. One thing that made me reflect on in this committee meeting presentation was when Isaac was presenting the report on the construction of the William Jolly Bridge, was that our modern city-state was founded on bringing 21 cities, wards, or not wards, sorry, cities, towns and shires together. So this particular bridge, William Jolly Bridge, did one of those functions. It was basically designed and constructed to connect North Key to South Brisbane. When it was first constructed, it was known as the Gray Street Bridge, and construction occurred between 1928 and 1932 by Hornybrook Limited, and many of the councillors in this place will recognise that name. The bridge itself is a concrete-encased, oh, sorry, steel-encased-concrete bridge, typical of that time, very architectural on the outside, and it is considered a strategic connection within the city. Some of the questions were asked in the committee meeting were around, what's the longevity of the bridge? You know, most modern bridges these days are designed for 100 years. What was the original intent of the William Jolly Bridge design lifestyle? It's a forever bridge. It was never given a life cycle or never designed for a life cycle. And council has undertaken a 30-year maintenance programme to ensure that that bridge keeps going. As an example of that, we learnt in the committee presentation that council has removed part of the asphalt surface and waterproofed the decking to prevent water from going through and getting into the concrete. These are modern-day techniques that are being added to the bridge to extend its life cycle. We also learnt that the bridge itself is pretty much intact, the way that it was built in that time. The only modification that has been made to the bridge was the removal of a pier for Coronation Drive to go underneath the section at North Key. We've extended the life cycle of the bridge by adding an inspection decking underneath. Now, interestingly enough, the platform, the inspection platform underneath the bridge is there for being able to safely get into the spaces under the bridge and view the bridge to ensure that its life continues. Mr Chairman, the other thing that we learnt that I particularly found fascinating was that the piers on the William Jolly Bridge are hollow in nature. There's basically three cavities, and council officers can abseil into those cavities and do an inspection internally within those piers. When I asked if I could go in and have a look, I was told no. But that said, it's still a fascinating place that those piers actually go down into the riverbed. And, you know, when you think about how long ago it was built, it was almost 100 years ago, it's a fascinating structure in the way that it was done. The other thing that officers have undertaken is the restoration of handrails. Many councillors here would know that the scroll handrails or the bollards that sit underneath the handrails are quite decorative, and the officers have actually taken moulds of those and replaced them periodically when they're needed to, using modern techniques. However, the outcome is still the same, that the architectural design of the bridge is preserved, and it still contributes significantly to our riverscape and our cityscape. Mr Chairman, there was one other thing that they mentioned in the report, and that was the columns that I spoke of before. There's one of the columns within the piers does not have a mezzanine level. Council officers are looking at putting in a mezzanine level at some stage in the future into that middle pier that goes all the way down into the riverbed, just to facilitate ease of maintenance. And with it, Mr Chair, that is the committee report. We had no petitions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Toomey. Is there any further debate? No further discussion. I'll move the report. All in favour of the City Standards report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of February 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday 15th of February 2022 be adopted. councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So before moving to the report, I just want once again to inform the chamber of all the fantastic, wonderful things that have been happening in Brisbane in the last week. Last Wednesday evening, I attended the New Farm Cinemas where a part of Brizasia Mother's Table event occurred, and we had Taros Ramon, which is Taro Akamoto, Maggie Ewan from Cafe Omai, and Mimi Wingkey from the Indonesian restaurant, the three of these fantastic Brisbane residents. And I know, I think one is in your area, Mr Chair, and I think-
I can recommend the Luxor.
Yes, so I understand that the Indonesian restaurant is very, very popular, and I know that Maggie Ewan, and I'm not sure whether that is in, is a-
Tara's.
Yeah, Tara's in ours, I think. He's got a couple, he's got a couple around. All I can tell you is that it was fantastic, because not only did we have the restaurant owners, but also their families, and the producer, Lark Lee, who had written and directed these wonderful little videos, which have really taken off in terms of the Brizasia Festival, and Sounds Across Oceans have really been promoting our local businesses and our local talent in such a great way. And it was a wonderful evening, and I just want to recommend to people that the videos are on our Brisbane City Council website, but they can also be viewed at SBS On Demand, who partnered with Sounds Across the Oceans this year. And so, again, a fantastic opportunity for us to celebrate the multicultural community that Brisbane is. On Thursday, the Little Red Company, who was celebrating 10 years this year, had the production of Sisters Are Doing It For Themselves at the wonderful powerhouse. And again, fantastic to see so many people out supporting our local talent, and again, a wonderful production. On Friday, we celebrated Gladys Smith's 100th birthday. And Gladys is an amazing local lady and was having a great event at Events on Oxide with lots of people, and it was pouring rain, but there was nothing to diminish her, and I hope that she will be joining us at our centenarian morning tea with the Lord Mayor and the Lady Mayor this year. On Saturday, I joined councillor Strunk at Reddick Cliff Place to celebrate International Mother Language Day. Now, this is the first time this has been held, and it was put on by the Bangladesh Association of Brisbane. We do have a presentation at the Chermside Library, but I do want to thank the association for all of the work that they did, and I know that councillor Strunk and I very much enjoyed hearing about the martyrs that had fought so hard to allow people to use their mother language, and the fact that UNESCO has been behind this particular event. And I know that the Bangladesh Association of Brisbane are very keen to make it an annual event. I then attended on Saturday night the Queensland Symphony Orchestra of Soaring Heights, which again was fantastic with all of our beautiful, wonderful local talent. And on Sunday, I took my granddaughter to Southern Cross Solace Fire and Fury, which was also at Q- was also at QPAC and had the most amazing, amazing didgeridoo performer, Chris Williams. And I just again want to thank the Queensland Symphony Orchestra and Southern Cross Solous for the, the incredible work that they've done over very difficult times with, with Covid and so it was fantastic to see both so well attended. And I just sort of would like to recommend that to all of my fellow councillors and to really celebrate what we have in this beautiful city of Brisbane. Moving to the committee presentation, we had a presentation about the Sir Thomas Brisbane Planetarium. Now, the planetarium, and I think, I think I'm meant to tell everyone that this is where Counselor Toomey had his first date and fell asleep, second date, second date, and fell asleep with his now-wife, which just goes to prove that there is romance as well as all sorts of things at the Sir Thomas Brisbane Planetarium. The Planetarium was officially opened on the twenty-fourth of May nineteen seventy-eight and of course was named after Sir Thomas Brisbane. The committee was shown a number of media clips of television news story recognising the Planetarium's expertise regarding the Super Blood Moon lunar eclipse on the twenty-sixth of May twenty twenty-one, and many of you will remember just how popular that, that was. So the Planetarium and its expert astronomers featured in the live broadcast by Channel Nine and ABC Radio Brisbane and the media coverage of the Planetarium for the lunar eclipse reached a potential audience of one point one-three million people. And the estimated value of this media coverage is seventy-four thousand six hundred dollars. So it's, it was great to see that we were internationally recognised for the expertise of the people who are part of that wonderful Planetarium. So we also are programming for younger children, so a new show called Tycho Goes to Mars has been introduced as a sequel to the popular and long-running feature, Tycho to the Moon. And again, it was wonderful to see some examples of how the Planetarium is a place for all, all people. So we're very much looking forward to working with National Science Week and it's an amazing opportunity for all of us to promote such a wonderful opportunity to attend the Sir Thomas Brisbane Planetarium and I'll leave debate for the chamber.
Thank you. Any further speakers? No further speakers, we move straight to the vote on this report. Excellent report as it is. Counselor, Counselor Howard, thank you. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee Report, please.
Thanks, Mister Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee Meeting held on Tuesday the fifteenth of February twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it has been moved by Counselor Cunningham and seconded by Counselor Landers that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee Meeting dated Tuesday fifteen, February twenty twenty-two be adopted. Counselor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mister Chair. The Finance Committee received a presentation last week from the Strategic Procurement Branch on how local small businesses can engage and work with council. Often as councillors were approached by residents who want to learn how they can do business with council and it was good opportunity for the committee to learn more about these processes. Council's website is a great source of information and prospective suppliers can register through the supplier portal to see current and upcoming tenders and requests for quotes and register for notifications for future opportunities. Council also runs supplier forums to brief industry on opportunities and provide tips on how to put their best foot forward in the procurement process. I actually had the opportunity to attend a supplier forum at the Business Hub late last year and it was wonderful to see so many representatives of Brisbane's small and medium-sized enterprises eager to engage and eager to do work for their city. Of course, bi-local procurement policy is central to all procurement in council and with a thirty percent weighting and an eighty percent local spend target on which we are not only meeting but beating. We also received an overview of the Better Brisbane Market Led Proposals, which are another avenue for suppliers with unique proposition to put themselves forward. And I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you. Any further debate? No, Counselor Strunk? Thank you. We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. Councillors, we now move on to the next item, which is petitions. Are there any petitions? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Miss Chair. I have a petition requesting a wildlife fence at White Seal Reserve.
Thank you. Counselor Griffiths?
Yes, a petition requesting council install a speed bump at fifty-four Outlook Place, Jerak.
Thank you. Any further petitions? No further petitions? May I have a motion for receipt of the petitions, please?
Mister Chair, I move that the petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
Thank you, it has been moved by Counselor Landers and seconded by Counselor Griffiths that all petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move to general business. Are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Counselor Ethics Committee order? No councillors standing in that regard. Councillors, any matters of general business? Counselor Huang?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I rise to speak on the Lunar New Year and the, and update the chamber on the progress of local infrastructure projects. Mister Chair, during the general business last week, I was ready to share the joy and festivities with the chamber about the Lunar New Year celebration and what the year of tiger will bring to us, but with this great disappointment, the councillors on the opposition benches had all disappeared and didn't bother to present at the council chamber to represent their residents. Well, Mister Chair, according to the Chinese zodiac, tiger is a symbol of strength, exorcism of evils and bravery. As the year of tiger just started, we already witnessed bravery and the exorcism of evil in our lives. Over the past weeks, we saw the brave public servants, one after another, speaks out in public about the integrity flows of the Palashay Labour Government. Cover-ups and use of private emails for government businesses and raiding CCC computers are the evils we need to exercise to restore integrity in Queensland politics. Mister Chair, some may think cover-ups and use of private emails for government businesses have nothing to do with us, but it does have a significant impact on public policymaking. Mister Chair, as Counselor Allen's answered to my question earlier today, AMO Plains Satellite Hospital was announced through social media and there's every reason for me to believe it is a political move, try to distract public attention away from Labour's integrity crisis. It is something with no impact assessment on the environment, no assessment on traffic, no assessment on parking and no consultation with the local residents. This proposed satellite hospital is within AMO Plains neighbourhood area, neighbourhood plan area. And at last year's state interest check and consultation, the Deputy Premier Steve Miles, with his vibe, identified housing supply and diversity, livable communities and transport infrastructure as conditions of the neighbourhood plan. This year, this government decided to go against the conditions they imposed to announce the new satellite hospital. Mister Chair, in addition to the politically motivated AMO Plains Satellite Hospital announcement, a state minister who is at the centre of the integrity saga has suddenly decided to criticise Brisbane Metro and Rochdale Road and Priestdale Road intersection upgrade, which the state did not contribute a cent to the project. They shamelessly claim credit when it suits them and criticise when they are trapped in another integrity crisis. Mister Chair, both Brisbane Metro and Rochdale Road and Priestale Road intersection upgrade demonstrates that when governments work cooperatively together, we can achieve bigger and better projects that benefits more people. We look forward to work with the state government after a royal commission has investigated their latest integrity crises. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Counselor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak about the passing of a significant Aboriginal elder, Uncle Lewis Orchard. I got to know Uncle Lewis through his work at Kubara Kindy, but his story was much broader than that. He was born at the Royal Brisbane and Women's Hospital in nineteen forty-eight to Thomas Orchard and Audrey Collins. His father, Thomas, was a Kuma man from South West Queensland and Northern New South Wales and his mother, Audrey, a cabbie-cabbie and wocka-wocka woman. Uncle Lewis spent the first four years of his life living with his mother and older brother at his auntie's place in Hope Street, South Brisbane. Just after he turned four years old, he and his older brother, Thomas, were resettled in Sherberg with his auntie and uncle and their family. He was always grateful of the home that was offered to him at Sherberg. Lewis said his first memory there was his first day of school. He loved his childhood and the freedom that it brought him. He fondly remembered the short time he had with his grandfather, Oscar Collins, in Sherberg and regretted he didn't learn more of his heritage from him when he was young. At the age of fifteen, Lewis was exempted from under the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Protection Act and was forcibly removed from Sherberg. He was thought to have not conformed to his expected role and was considered a troublemaker. His family were not told and he was removed with just the clothes on his back. He was taken to Mergon and told not to return, which he didn't do for some time. Uncle Lewis loved the community of Sherberg, being taught by his elders there, and while he was born in Brisbane, Uncle Lewis always considered himself a Sherberg boy. Some time passed and after having worked in various occupations, Uncle Lewis returned to Sherberg unbeknownst to the superintendent and caught up with his partner for a while, Melita Sandow. They left Sherberg after moving to Rockhampton and Cairns, they finally settled in Brisbane. They affirmed their love for one another by marrying in May of nineteen sixty-nine at the Brisbane Registry Office. They started a family and raised five children, William, Catherine deceased, Lewis Junior, Melita Junior and Suzanne. Their last child, Suzanne, was born twenty years after their first daughter was born. And when Lewis asked Melita how she could have gotten pregnant, she replied, "It takes two to tango", to which Lewis replied, "I only wanted a slow waltz". Uncle Lewis and Auntie Melita have many grand and great-grandchildren and family was everything. He made sure they came first and foremost and always tried to support and provide for them. Uncle Lewis is passionate about social justice for Australia's indigenous people and especially young people. He worked for and with many indigenous organisations, including Dundalai House, Murray Watch, Umpi Karumba Corporation and the Aboriginal Legal Service in Brisbane. He took these roles very seriously and wanted to address the imbalance of services to indigenous people. He was often left frustrated though that the wheels of justice turned so slowly. Uncle Lewis also worked for the Kubara Aboriginal Kindergarten, which is where I first met him. He was a life member there and he was there at the start all those years ago. The work he did at Kubara was very rewarding for Uncle Lewis, helping on the ground in his community. My first experience of Uncle Lewis was in fact in his absence. A letter from him was read out at a Survival Day event which he couldn't attend due to illness and his power and passion really grabbed me. In that, he implored political leaders to do more than just speak platitudes but to follow words with action and for people to demand just that. When I got to sit down with Uncle Lewis and speak with him, that fire was still burning. Soon after council initially offered Kubara a four-year lease to replace their twenty-five year lease, I went and met with the board. Uncle Lewis was incensed and so was I at the time. And I made the commitment to the board that I would work and walk alongside them. When we got word that a revised offer of twenty-five, of a twenty-five year lease was now in place, I rang Kubara Kindy straight away. I couldn't get anyone at the time as they'd already left for the Sorry Day event at Kalinga Park, which I joined you at on that day, Chair. But I did tell, I did take great delight in telling them the good news personally there. Uncle Lewis couldn't be there either but did send me a message later on and this is just a bit of the email he sent through to me. "I was in hospital last week with the usual flare-up of my COPD. I was recuperating and resting when I received a rather excited telephone call from Gloria and Joanne from the Kubara Kindergarten explaining to me that you had informed them of the excellent news of an extended lease of twenty-five years for the Kubara Kindergarten and Pre-Prep Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Corporation. Can I say that was the best medication for anything that ails you? I was so pleased, excited and just full of pride of what you've done for the Murray Community on Brisbane's north side and I will tell you that personally when we next meet. In the meantime, I would simply like to express my thanks because you have cut through the rhetoric and put into action what you said to me at our first meeting and that you would walk with us and help us and you certainly did. And it's outcomes like that that certainly are the most satisfying and gratifying part of this job. We spoke at the anniversary of the apology to the Stalin generations and spoke of political heroes of ours. Uncle Lewis told me that Paul Keating's ninety-three Redfern address was something he would never forget and of course, that apology from Kevin Rudd as well. But he said to me, his real political hero was Jim Sawley because his commitment to First Australians was real. He spoke the words and he put them into action. He secured that twenty-five year lease for Kubara at Tagam in nineteen ninety-six and led the nation on reconciliation when others failed. And that is a great reminder of power of leadership. I agreed with him on all of those names, of course, but after thinking about it more, I thought of someone else and I never got the chance to tell Uncle Lewis this, but my political hero is Lewis John Orchard. He showed me what a life of advocacy, service and commitment to your community can achieve, even in the face of great adversity. We'll be much poorer without him, but eternally rich for having had him. My sincere condolences to Uncle Lewis's family and friends at this difficult time. Barley, Uncle Lewis Orchard."
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Further speakers? Counselor Strunk?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on a couple of, well, at least one event and, and some constituent outrage on a particular service that Brisbane City Council should be doing much better with. Now, I'll speak about that first and that, that was the grass cutting that, that didn't take place in my ward from about November last year. And we know this because I've shown evidence by local residents how, how long it was in November and there hadn't been a cut up until about a week ago. Anyways, now this, this was crisis management really in, in a lot of wards across Brisbane, this was crisis management that the Brisbane City Council didn't handle very well. And honestly, I mean, the buck stops with the Lord Mayor. He should have been on to his chair and said, "Listen, I don't want to hear excuses, I just want to hear what your solution is, right? What, what would you suggest the solution to overcome this problem?" I, I can only, I can only think that obviously they didn't think it was a crisis and so they didn't come up with a solution, but we knew the lanino was, was going to be evident this year, this spring and in summer. We were told by many meteorologists on every TV programme that you want to watch that it was coming and this has happened before. So we knew very well that we were going to have a problem. And, and it was, it was a perfect storm without being a storm because it kept raining on, on a semi-regular basis, forty or fifty mils, maybe a bit more, perfect growing weather for guess what? And we think that was not something that we could have planned for. You know, we all take some criticism and some suggestions about solutions from our residents and I've asked my team to put together a few, a few of those. And so the, and of course, some of these were suggested by multiple people. But they said, "Well, why don't you increase the frequency when you need it to be done?" And because they've all seen the grass being cut when there was no grass and it was just brown and dust everywhere because the contractor said, "Well, you know, I'm, I'm paid to cut the grass whether the grass is growing or not, right? So all they're cutting is weeds, if there's even weeds. So why not build up some of that frequency in, in not doing it when it doesn't need to be done, right? That was one of the suggestions, of course. Build in some capacity for those times that you need it. They said, "Well, you know, why, why have they, you know, we do use a lot of work hire, right? And, and so why don't you build in the capacity to increase the, the frequency and/or the number of people out there doing the job, right? When it needs to be done." I said, "Great idea. Don't know why the Brisbane City Council hasn't thought of that one." Flexibility as well, of course, they said, "Well, you should just be more flexible with your business, you know, in, in the service that you operate." And I said, "Yeah, well, there's lots of flexibility you could build into the system, but why haven't they done that?" They said it was really just a Band-Aid approach when, when the crisis arrived and we knew that there was going to be a crisis and, but it was just a Band-Aid approach. And so much so that I, you know, when, when this all came about and it just kept growing and growing and it wasn't being cut, wasn't being cut week after week after week, they started ringing up, of course. And so consequently, those parks and road verges were just growing and growing and growing. And, and thanks, Counselor Toomey, for letting me know that, you know, it's about, they can do a maximum of about two hundred mils on a cut. Because I can assure you the cut that some of these guys were doing, and I assume probably some girls as well, were doing over the last couple of weeks, they were, it was waist-high. Now, I don't know how their millers went- Now, I don't know how their mowers went through it, and when, and when they did go through it, it was, you know, they, they only did it once, and if you mowed your own grass and it got a bit long, you'd probably go over it twice, but they didn't go through it, and they left an incredible amount of waste behind, clippings behind, so much so now it's grown up, and the clippings are sitting on top of the new grass that keeps coming up. I mean, honestly, I, I know councillor Griffiths put up a, a video which ended up on TikTok, and it's still travelling, it's still travelling, with, with its oxyteria, but I can assure you some areas of my ward, I could have put my greyhound into there, and all you would have seen was her head going across the grass. That's how, that's, in some areas, that's how, how long it was. It really needed to be done with the slasher, and of course, the, the operators were just using their normal mowers. So, I just think, you know, crisis management, it, it, listen, you, it shouldn't have been a crisis, the Lord Mayor should have said to the Chair, "Listen, we're going to have a problem, because we got a lanino here, and so you just better talk to the contractors and just get a plan in place to respond, right?". That didn't happen, they just let it, they just let it go through to the keeper, and it's really sad that it's come to that. In regards to an event, there's an event coming up this Saturday at the Civic Centre for the Vietnamese community are raising money for the Afghan refugees, and Dr Quan Buong and his team at the Brisbane Chapter, of course, are, you know, they have done many fundraisers over the years for many different causes, and, and I, and I, you know, if you, if there's any way that you can donate to that, or anyone that may happen to be watching to donate to that, they'll, they'll raise many, many thousands of dollars, of course, within the Vietnamese community, but it really needs to be a whole of community for some of these refugees that are really doing it tough, whether they be in country or out. They, they really need to be supported for what's happened over in Afghan, Afghanistan, you know, six months ago, or whatever it was, the, the exit of the Western powers left, and they're really doing it tough. So, I, I would just like to mention that, that it's from about 9:30 on in the Civic Centre till about 2 o'clock. And the final event, I think I'll, I'll leave to councillor Hutton in regards to the naming of a bridge in, in, in a way called, under the name of John Holland, and I think she'll probably want to talk to that in general business, so I'll leave her to it, but it was a really wonderful unveil. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. That's really nice, councillor Strong, that's really cool to see communities supporting each other. I wanted to speak on the matter of council fining homeless people for sleeping in their cars, and councillor Marks isn't present today, but did a good thing the other day in that I became aware of an individual who was sleeping in their car in a park in Tewong, and council officers had fined that person, and later the fine, I believe, was dropped by the, the Disputes Commissioner Processes. But I think that experience highlights for me how flawed the council's current approach is in regards to this issue. I remember a couple of years ago, I brought a notified motion to this chamber, calling on council to confirm that it won't fine people for sleeping in their cars if they're homeless, and I distinctly remember at the time that councillor Maddick gave me a lot of flak in the chamber, and accused me of engaging in political games, you, through you, Chair, you were quite hard on me, and at the time, I found myself wondering, "Am I going crazy? Am I, like, am I not understanding what's going on here?". Because I'd been repeatedly advised by homeless people that they were getting hassled by council officers for sleeping in cars, and then I had the LNP administration standing up and saying, "No, we don't do that, we would never fine homeless people for sleeping in their cars, that's outrageous", and I was attacked for even suggesting that that was happening. But the reality is, it does happen from time to time, and I'm not asserting any malice on the part of the individual LNP councillors who've chaired that committee, I'm not asserting any malice on, on the part of council officers. But the blunt reality is that because we have an offence on the public land and council assets local law, because we have those offences on our local laws, there are occasions where council officers are fining people for sleeping in their cars, or sometimes they're using the offence of camping in a park, and they are fining homeless people for camping in a park. Now, this is happening. We've got the reference numbers from the, from the fines, we, we know it's happening, we, I've seen the, seen the fines myself, I've spoken to one of the dudes who has given one of these fines, and it is not acceptable that council's response is, "Oh, well, they can appeal it and challenge it through the three-stage review process". These are people who are homeless. They often have serious mental health issues, they often have a whole bunch of other barriers to engaging with the system, and the last thing that you, you need when you're struggling to get a roof over your head, when you're struggling to find work, et cetera, the last thing you need is a $600 fine from council because you slept in your car. That's really quite disgusting, and I've, I've raised that repeatedly, and the council administration's been very clear repeatedly on the record, saying this LNP administration would not fine homeless people for sleeping in their cars, but you're still doing it. You are still fining homeless people for sleeping in their cars and sleeping in parks. You might not mean to, it might be an accident, but it's an accident that's happened repeatedly over the last few years. It's been happening on multiple occasions, and even when fines aren't being issued, council officers are acting as though it is wrong for homeless people to sleep in their vehicles or to sleep in parks, and applying pressure on them, sometimes just quite subtle and gentle pressure, saying, "Oh, don't you have somewhere else to go? Or, you know, this is illegal, you can't be here, et cetera, et cetera", comments like that, that council officers make to vulnerable people, which create an impression that it's, that those, for the, among those vulnerable people, that they're not welcome in those public spaces, when they have nowhere else to go. If they can't sleep in their car, if they can't sleep in a park, where else is a homeless person meant to sleep? That's a simple enough question. They, they can't go and sleep on people's private property without permission, so they, they inevitably end up sleeping in and existing in public spaces. And I, I think this administration is still in denial about the fact that because it has those rules on its books, that sends a certain signal to the public servants, to the council officers, it sends a signal to the broader community, it sends a signal to the homeless and marginalised and rough sleepers in our city, that this behaviour is somehow unacceptable, or undesirable, or inappropriate, when in fact, there is nothing wrong. There is nothing, it should not be unlawful for a homeless person to sleep in a public park. That's not them doing the wrong thing, or, "We'll look the other way, it's not a good thing, but we're just going to let it slide". There's nothing wrong with a homeless person sleeping in a park. It's not good that they have to sleep there, it's an embarrassment to the government, and to the state government, and the federal government, and to council that people are homeless, it's an embarrassment and completely disappointing that there isn't access to enough public housing and crisis accommodation. But the, the fact that people are sleeping in the park doesn't mean those people should be under pressure, or made to feel like they're doing the wrong thing, and it certainly shouldn't mean that Brisbane City Council is fining those people. So, I've raised it repeatedly with councillor Marks, I hope this is the last time it happens. I hope I never again encounter someone who says they've been fined because they were homeless, but even, I, I want to emphasise that whether or not fines are being issued, the fact that that event exists on the book, and the fact that council officers are acting as though it's not appropriate for homeless people to sleep in public spaces, is itself a deep concern. And I'm really feeling frustrated that, I've, I've been here almost six years now, saying, saying a really simple thing, a really simple idea, really simple ambition, that we don't fine homeless people for being homeless. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a controversial thing, even the, even the Liberal Party should be able to agree to that. But it's still happening, it's, it happened under Lord Mayor Graham Quirk's watch, it's happening under Adrian Schriner's watch, it is a stain on this city, it's embarrassment to all of us as councillors, and as Brisbane City Council as an institution. I know there are council officers in other teams in council who feel uncomfortable about it, they feel embarrassed to work for an administration that fines homeless people or that threatens homeless people with legal action if they don't move on. But we really need to be changing the way we do this stuff, and, and I know there are some good offices in the public space liaison team, I know there are some good council officers who are trying to do the right thing and connect vulnerable people with services, but it is a tricky, it is a tricky space, it's difficult working with people who have serious trauma in their past and serious mental health issues, it's hard finding, solving that problem of homelessness when there's just not enough public housing around. But again, I just want to reiterate one last time, stop fining them, that's all. Stop fining them, stop hassling them, stop asking them to move on, and through you, Chair, councillor Maddick, stop pretending this isn't happening, because it is happening, unfortunately.
Further speakers? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to reply briefly to councillor Strong's comments. We had a really fabulous bridge opening over the weekend for Frank Holland, and I will provide a fulsome report when I get back into the chamber, hopefully next week. Thank you.
Okay, thanks councillor Hutton. Any further speakers? No further speakers in general business? I declare the meeting closed. Thank you, everyone.